He said, "I hope coming to the city council meeting, I hope this helps you be able to be more comfortable than you come to the city council meetings." And it said, "Your friends in the ninth ward." So I called Jonathan right away. I said, "Jonathan."
Nah, that wasn't him.
Yeah, it was. It was. Yeah, you know, and he started laughing. He started, he said, "Everyone needs friends, Gladys." I said to him, "Jonathan, are you pandering to me?"
Nah.
We both was laughing. We both was laughing. And he, he just said, "You know, Gladys," he said, "I really think what you're doing at city council is for the good of the people." He said, "If that helps you sit easier." I said, "What, you trying to get me to keep my butt in the seat?" You know, these chairs, these chairs scream, "Get your ass up and leave."
Right, right.
And that's why they block these chairs. That's right. That's what these chairs say. Get your ass up and leave.
What's that? Look at that big moose over there.
Sandy!
I need to see the ACO. They don't have five. Because people should be able to see that ACO before y'all go.
Yeah, anything.
No, they, they won't even release it, man. They won't even put the ACO on the agenda.
Well, you know, anything that's related to the water crisis and all that.
They won't even let us see it.
I'm very careful about that. Because, you know, I was one council person that voted no for the city to go into the settlement because I felt like we should have taken it to trial.
You see, nearly gonna try to get caught.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't, we shouldn't want the trial.
We should be getting the money. Yeah, we would've got more money.
Yeah, we would've got, and we would've been paid by now.
Yeah.
We would've been paid.
No, I'm giving him, talking about his little bitch ass piece of shit. I know you hate going up there.
I would hate going up there if I were you. Most of them people up there, they're up the devil. They're empty vessels for sale.
And, and you know, it's not really starting up to come up here. She still says it.
I know, but is she coming up?
Yeah, she'll be. She says. What? She says she won't.
Who? Tanya? She told me that she was.
Looking at me, dang!
How she gonna tell, how she gonna tell me? And then try and convince somebody.
Oh, no.
And I'm just saying, I was just.
Hey.
No.
I need to, I need to, uh, I gotta be gone. Hey, I need to be gone, man, at six. At six o'clock? Yeah. Why you leaving so early?
I gotta hang. I'm here.
I know, you probably gonna have a big one because the young ain't gonna perform. Oh, yes, y'all do.
No, not if, nah, she don't, she don't go.
Right. If, if, if I...
Didn't say anything?
If I go.
It'd be nice to be the same.
Of course, it need.
I just wanted to see it for myself. I just hoping, I was hoping for the other one.
Yeah, he, he didn't.
He was standing up there at the new service center, depressed, nervous.
With who?
With Sharon, with me and this.
At what place now?
At the, at the service center they had up there.
Yeah, they're open, open.
I'm not, she's still having a little trouble sleeping. Who are you gonna sit next to? Why she sitting in the tri-?
She ain't gonna be sitting in Tanya's seat when we get down. She just sitting there for a second.
Why she sitting in the tri-?
She just trying to be funny, she. Oh, they calling somebody now. Let me see.
Oh, Lord.
Is this little move that? That's Alexis, you're young. Oh, these some dirty motherfuckers. My God, these motherfuckers dirty.
I just need. I couldn't come the last time because I couldn't stand her.
It don't show me, it don't show me. Hey, dude, when you watching?
You know Jonathan.
What's crazy there?
Uh, pretty much. Thank you for the good show today.
Who's that on the end right there? Who's that on the end? Uh, I can, I can too. I ain't watch all of them.
You don't, wait, you don't have seven shorts.
She's gonna start talking for a quick second. Oh, 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 hey, I gotta go. I gotta go to the fair. I gotta, I gotta be here.
You going up there? Yeah. All right, you represent.
Uh, it might happen, I don't know.
I know. Got that police officer with a badge up back there looking right at me. Who is he?
She's sitting there whispering as she's telling you see.
That's right, because you don't want she on her way in. She went straight to him. And they were both looking at me talking. And you know what? And yesterday when I went across town, I come off Surfer Drive, and there was a police officer coming this way.
Right.
And when I pulled out on, off Surfer Drive, that police officer did a complete U-turn and, and followed me all the way to Miller Road.
Wow.
So, you know, I just stayed within the speed limit.
Right.
And let him follow me.
Yeah.
But if you think that I don't get up underneath this woman's skin.
Yeah.
Think again.
Yes, ma'am. You wanna wake the school up?
We have five members present. Their request for changes in addition to the agenda. There is none. I'm going to move the exciting session to after council request. To that objection. It's now time for public, to, for public speaking. Members of the public chamber no more than three minutes due to the city council on any subject. Individual comments, only once speaking opportunity per speaker. There is a timer. You can see it. Three minutes if you get cut off. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. Once again, my name is Howard Elbichum. I live in the third ward, 759 Lindon Avenue. And my councilman just walked in Murphy, the one who got bribed by a lawnmower. A thousand dollars by a lawnmower. Anyway, to the, to America and to the, the mayor of New York. As you see, this city, although it's run by my president, people trying to make us look like you and like in Buffalo, New York. Like the other, other day, I was on my way to get me a meal downtown. And the act of God, God passed with me and made me leave my wallet at the house before I got on the bus. But I was gonna get on anyway, but it's against law. You can go to jail and get locked up for three weeks and then just quit, but not have your wallet. So I came, I ran back down then. And on the way back, the bus everybody runs from downtown talking like you gotta go about money to school to get on the bus. But they didn't tell me what's happening. They dropped me off at my junior high school. And I got, but on the way back, I'm trying to say I ran into the seventh ward council lady, Ms. Mashack. At the protest fight. And she grinning like nothing happened. They said, "Sir, what you know, you got, about three, four, four people got shot, Mashack." Grinning, and one of them was letting me give me a, I mean, you see what, what I'm talking about, the fire peoples, the fire peoples talking about them. Retired fire chief is, man, talking about he using his medical state people to the damn land. And that's, he never did that before when we using our, they using our hospital money. And, and we up. And the police, and the beat goes on, get flipped. America, well, uh, we gonna get this situation fixed tonight because in another angle, in a real board, she saw me what's going on, she still stay put, I'm gonna get you back to your house, sir. And be, her name was, this is what they can't call people name right. And be, and the, just if we're in this, or something happened, again, I guess y'all hoping that the light, the God strike people down, the funny guy rain out there. The woman, she act like they concerned, but they dropped me off in the, at the soup kitchen. But I got on the bus now, and a big airway, a big puddle of water. But anyway, what I'm trying to say, you're gonna get dealt with, uh, Ms. Oh, Matt Dr. Lewis trying to box with her. What them hotties do, the white boy and the white, the white boy, brother, so you cannot touch my brother, you up there. But you trying to break a cut off up in his ass, the thing like, I mean, will you, will you, ah! Damn, nice one, councilwoman, ain't here. But anyway, this is city's flip business. And every one of y'all vote, it reflects, everybody in the city has had a dumb test of effect. The people in your ward, whether they voted for people or they didn't, whether they already is over or they're not, whether they vote or they don't. The citizens of Flint is coming upon an election in the ninth ward. And we're confused, you know? We don't, there's terrible communication. And I'm asking, since the county clerk, the best they can do is put up a website that you can go to receive some voter information. Can the city of Flint put out some cards exactly like they put out those voter registration cards that they were sending to people to have everybody confused? Especially those in the ninth ward. Also, in the first ward and the seventh ward, because those eligible voters need to know that they are eligible to vote. And also that there is an election. Because a website, people ain't going to, podcast, everybody ain't watching, the news, everybody ain't paying attention to. So another way of communication would be the same way that you got all those voter registration cards all come through the paper. And since they receive two voter registration cards, they should have received two letters letting them know that there's gonna be an election and, and they can, and they can also do their election. So so kind of communication between the city, the state, and the county and the residents needs to be seen. Because you got people going out here getting signatures. They don't know if they getting good signatures or bad signatures. You got, you got masks that say this house qualify. But if you have a list of voters, actual voters, you may go to that door and find out that then one of the people that is registered at that house lived it.
Right, that's right.
You have people that think they are registered because they registered to the state of Michigan, but they are not on the, uh, city of Flint voting registration roll. It's a lot of confusion. And since the ninth ward councilwoman is not here and there's councilmen earlier seek that she vacates, she doesn't even want to fight for it. Well, somebody please do something. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm from one of her. I would like, I need to answer this today. I've been at my residence since the ninth ward. I'm on Brownell Street. I got, uh, I got a motorcycle, uh, girl. And I was smoking Ms. Lewis, and I took her pictures and showed her pictures. This been going on for the last two years. My whole neighborhood, everybody that's in the neighborhood is, is, uh, scared. The kids can't even come outside and play. We got these, uh, guys riding motorcycles up and down the sidewalk. The police have been out there multiple times. Uh, 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 I done spoke to the landlord, I done spoke to section eight. I done talked to everybody there to talk to about this thing. This been going on for the last two years. I got a, my house is like a prison. I got bricks all around my house to keep these people off my property. I done took Ms. Lewis's picture and showed her pictures of this situation. So this is something that's not made up. And the police have been out here like more than twelve times. And another neighbor stayed on the other side of me. He stayed there like, uh, as long as I have, but it was so bad. He had, oh, I got a senior old neighbor. She gotta turn her cinema fan up to turn her radio, I mean, turn her cinema fan up to turn her TV up just to go to sleep. I mean, answer. That's I don't understand. This lady done been in court. The police have been out like, uh, 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 twelve times. I'm doing everything that is possible. It's been fifteen years ago, I got shot nine times. I'm in fear for my life. I'm waiting on the police right now. I know all the better police would make. I got trespassing sign. She had her game over there the other day. They takes my brick. Where's there no trespass and start making shit out of it. They goes on the other side of my property. Where's there no trespass? They're all loading up over there. So I just need some answers. I just need, uh, I need some help in this situation. My life is in danger. I've spoke to the police multiple times. I'm not gonna let these people hurt me. And I done sold this thing through pictures. So this is not yet fabricated. That's made up. I got a towbell down. So I don't know. I need some answers. I'm fearing for my life.
Ms. Lewis. Getting out of this, hey, uh, not in this group, but in government office, we all gonna have to vote on ACO. ACO is a mandatory consent order. And it's resolving, uh, that the city approved of writing the city of Flint. That the state of, uh, environmental bring latest energy drinking water and environmental health division has made allegations that the city of Flint is violating of Michigan State, uh, federal drinking wire drinking act. Leon, you and I, we were the first to, uh, participate in changing service lines here in city Flint. But you and I participated in going down to recall Governor Snyder. Councilwoman Curry, you and they don't hear such a greeting. Y'all know how important it is for the city, the residents, to be a part of making decisions for ourselves also. They won't even put the ACO out so that we can be able to come up here and go along with you all to say, "Hey, you know what? This should be included in this violation, or this should be done, or that should be done." What is it that's wrong? What, what did the city violate? They won't even put it out. Do y'all have it? Are y'all just gonna vote and say they violated? You know, you have a mayor trying to be in the news now talking about, oh, we should be getting money from those sources. Well, what were you at, when, when it started, Mayor, you leave too. You said that this is the floor, not the ceiling. We not getting anything. A lot of people has been turned down. Then he said it would be at the end of the year. He don't even know that the first plane auditorium, which was Archer LLC, got fired because they didn't even do it. Then they had to start all over again. Don't come out here with these false pretenses or these false statements, not knowing for sure. Just repeating something when you have not been following. If they wouldn't have voted and went to court, we would probably be getting more than six hundred and fifty million dollars. Then you turn around and hire a row who they settled for two million dollars, but we didn't gave them a contract and paid them more than two million dollars. So really, they ain't got away with our money. We had paid our own settlement. When are we gonna hand up doing what's right? Nowhere on here have we been talking about why. We've been arguing with each other going back and forth, you know, Kansas and Councilwoman Lewis, we haven't even been talking about real stuff. I've been, I've been talking about the ACO. I've been asking about the ACO. No one has spoke about the ACO. Now that the ACO is here, where is it? Can we see it? Can we know what's going on so that if you come up here and have an analytic, analytic with the debate about what's going on, how this city has, uh, failed the residents? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Gladys Williamson. My little room, my board. I actually don't wanna talk to yous. I wanna talk to yous because I want you to know that for us to come here every time they hold a meeting, they don't care about us.
Oh, Lord.
They not care about us. They just care that you don't know. They are, Miss Williamson, you are the president of council. This is a corporation. Yous are a corporation.
Ms. Williamson, please address the council.
I'm, okay, yous don't care nothing about us. And for us to come up here all the time and try and get our breath out to tell you what's wrong in our wards ain't worth spit. They, yous don't care about us? You hear this man getting up here saying that he ain't safe in his house and he's been shot all them times? Ms. Lewis, could you look up for a minute? Have some respect for the people that are up here talking for that little bit of three minutes. Yeah, you go ahead and you just lock your lips because that's pretty much how we feel about you. And, and when we get a chance, you're gonna be out of them seats. All of you are gonna be out of these seats because you know what? Because you don't care. And you don't tell these people that the east side is not gonna be a part of the Flint master plan. The first ward is gonna be a park. You don't tell these people this stuff. You go dancing around them and act like you care about these people and you don't care nothing about these people. You, you put this Burns out because she has the receipts for these checks that yous took money for? Yes. So that you can vote this money? You don't, you are not accountable, never ab- about how much money you spent. You go in your little dark corners, shut the door, and pass and decide what you're gonna spend. And then you come out here and you just go through the motions with us. That's all you do. That's all you do is you're good for not too much. Not too much. You're not good for not it. And you, Judy Priestley, you are the most worthless person sitting up there.
Take that, Miss Judy.
That's right. Take that, Miss Judy.
Good evening. Jan Marie Erler, seventh ward council candidate. I need to read out, thank you, Ms. Williamson, that it is apparent that the council members present do not pay attention to the public speakers. I watched the council persons of the seventh and third wards converse when the first and second speakers were speaking to them. That is rude, is disrespectful to everyone in the city. You're either reading your agenda for the evening or you're watching Facebook or whatever it is you're doing instead of paying attention to the public and it's reprehensible.
That's right.
Now, moving on. I request that a resolution be put forth and passed requiring a link be added to the city's online ARPA portal. The purpose of the link is to provide viewers with details per category as to the names of organizations and businesses awarded ARPA dollars, the contact person or manager in charge, the date awarded, amount awarded, and intended use of dollars. Furthermore, quarterly or at least by annual reports should be provided to council and the city to allow officials and the public to know how these taxpayer dollars are being used. Attentional information should be requested of recipients and reviewed as necessary by this council to help evaluate use. This information may be considered should future opportunities arise where taxpayer dollars may be awarded to the same applicants. Next, in consideration of the use of taxpayer dollars to pay for an upcoming travel and expenses related to an environmental conference in Iowa to be attended by Councilwoman Mashack, interim Councilwoman Mashack, forgive me, and for her to speak on behalf of her non-city of Flint water lab business and for her companion, Councilwoman Lewis, whose purpose is unknown, I ask that a resolution be put forth and passed preventing any and all council persons from using taxpayer dollars for purposes unrelated to a representative of any city of Flint or council city business. As it relates to the Iowa trip, as a taxpayer, I request that the city of Flint receive reimbursement for both council persons of, as related to all money spent from taxpayer dollars within seven days of their return. In conclusion, I recommend a request that council persons Mashack and Lewis be censured for having defiled the public trust by requesting, accepting, and using taxpayer dollars for all expenses taken to Iowa to participate in or attend a conference having nothing to do with the city of Flint and/or its council business. Thank you.
The only useless is there.
Hello, my name is Jerry Smith, and I'm here on behalf, uh, St. Mary's Holy Church. They are having prayer service May the seventh for the city of Flint, for anybody that wants to come out and get prayer, get healed. All of us need it. That's what I'm here on. We have, uh, St. Mary's Holy Church. Please, everybody, and if this is your ward, please come out. Please, and show your face, let these people know that you know all of us need healed. All of us need prayer. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Dave P. C. the fourth ward. I'm here to, I just went over this. Over a million dollars being spent on places like Vestal Room, Burst of Hill House, Castlever, all these places, which I'm not against. But when I live in a neighborhood that is so filthy, it would put, you rent, excuse me.
What?
It's just unbelievable what's going on over there on the east side. I'm not talking fourth ward versus two fourth ward. It's east side, you ward, where you live. We can't get anything cleaned up, nothing. We got these guys driving around in brand new city trucks, says.
That's right.
Neighborhood safety, the game of improvement. I wonder what the improvement is. Now, I've been going out over there. If you park on a sidewalk, you got a ticket. If you, if you didn't cut your grass, so you come and cut it, keep the neighborhoods up. Now there's cars being stripped right in the front yard.
That's right.
People are hurt. It doesn't matter. They just do anything they want and there's no repercussions. And I've got with you, Priestley, I don't know how many times.
Come on.
Oh, that's so fun.
And nothing. And I'm not going against any council person. I'm just telling you what's going on and it has, something has to be done. The summer's coming up, the fries are already starting to come. These people driving around with no license plates on their cars. They got windows so jacked. They got windows so dark they couldn't see it. They have a search light. I don't say it, at least not. Of course, I don't see too many police over there anyway. They have to worry about it. But I see a state house, a lot of new houses, they can't do nothing. But it's just a shame. It's American citizens, and we got a lot of retirees that live over there to keep their places up. Have to live in an environment where they can't call it after dark, or they can't walk on the sidewalks because they're in such bad shape. They're dumping tires all over them. How many fires did they burn in the last month? Burning everything down. They strip them. You can watch them strip a house. Then as they strip it, they burn it, then they salvage whatever's left. Yeah, I told them. I go place by place. I'm not gonna be done, nothing to be done. They don't. They don't pick up tires. They don't do nothing. And you know it's good. I'm not lying or making it up. They haven't done nothing.
Is there anyone else in life who goes on? Too bad that they probably don't dress.
Yeah, you're doing okay. I'm over there, but I feel better.
Yes, I'm in the second ward. I'm here to, I'm speaking on a lot of issues that's happening here on this city. And I'd like to take the time for this being people like myself for not coming here, taking time, out of my schedule to see what's going on in the city. And the council, not only council, but private councils have left them with the same people that the city wanted to do. They get up here and do what they want to do. That was the difference. And us, as people, getting tired of it, you guys.
That's right.
Doing what you want to do. And I'm also happy you guys have this TV up here now so people have something to see what you guys are doing and what needs to be done. And hopefully, we'll get more people like me to come up here to discuss you guys about problems that we have in this city. Because family, you guys must have lived in this. You guys don't see what's really going on. And you guys take your own life among each other, which they pass on to everyone.
Share, share this.
Thank you.
Young council, permit to sit forward. I just have one question. When can we get an update on the water surveillance for ten years?
Answer it.
No, it's afterward. It's after, it's after. It's after, man.
I'm stupid, period. I'm from the first ward. And I just want you to jump out to sit out here and to look up here. And y'all supposed to be keeping up high, in high position. But y'all can sit and talk among and among the others and not look at the people that are talking to you.
Thank you.
And that trying to make people feel sorry, which you never made me feel.
That's right.
And I pray that, and I'm a great guy. And when they come in here and sit and try to look down on somebody.
It's shit on my face.
They in a bad place.
I gotta go.
You're in a bad, a bad position. It's what you need. And you're not paying attention to what you're doing, like my lady right there. But I come tonight to bring down, to tear down the stronghold.
That's right.
I'm tearing it down tonight. Baby, you gotta go. You're adding too much to the guy. It's not for the people, of the city, of the people.
That's right.
And you need the others up here. They follow you.
That's right.
But baby, just like I keep saying, I'm a heavy. Your ass gonna be kicked over, baby, on the magic sheet. He said, wherever I bury him, he don't hurt. But he will find him in heaven. I bury your ass tonight.
She loving him too. She loving him.
My name is Beverly B. Fleely. I'm in the third ward. We don't have a week for you. Evil.
Nope.
You can't, Mashack, I'm ashamed of you to sit up and tell Councilwoman Jerry Winfrey that she, you showed her how to be a lady. You twice, she twice your age. Anything, you should have been showing your daddy how to treat women. And I keep, I'm gonna keep saying, 190 pounds you owe Councilwoman Jerry apology to get up and try to tear her down for something that you and the Nailedin is doing that's wrong. And Quincy Murphy, I've been out here knocking these doors, darling, and I ain't stopping. And you can be ready for it. But I had, I got a little gift for you. People don't tell you to buy things what they call pull-ups. You need to pay for the shitty ass. They come, they call you shitty ass, oh. And you're always shitting on yourself. And show this man that he can't tell you how you're being. I'ma leave your, I'ma leave your pack. That's not in the program. Anytime you go somewhere, you keep moving on yourself. Anytime you go somewhere, you keep moving on yourself.
Ma'am.
Ma'am.
Sit down.
A hundred.
You can't do that, Judy.
And I got something you too. We coming after you next, and we coming after your best. And we coming, we coming after you next.
She can't stop her. Hey, I mean, as, as, I'm, I'm not, I'm not condoning, I'm not condoning what she's saying. But she can't, she can't do that. That's the only thing I'm talking about, is the rights. That's wrong.
But I'm here to, just to say, so y'all get ready for y'all speaking.
You can't.
Anybody out here that don't raise me, or don't raise my kids, if y'all should, if y'all see her, out of mind.
Is there anyone else? See you now. All right.
Hey, I'm trying to find the Chinese.
What did you just tell me?
Oh, my God.
All I think I can say is that I pray in my lifetime that my grandchildren, I can see my grandchildren live with clean water, the streets fixed, the sidewalks that they don't have to jump over.
That's right.
Or they don't have to at risk of falling, that they can ride a bike down the street without riding over into the grass. I pray that I can grow a garden free from lead in the soil and free from water to water my garden with dead gins. I pray that my grandchildren get to see a fair and honest council sitting in front of them who's gonna vote for things for them to be able to live a prosperous and happy life. That they don't have to fear that when they go into a school, they gotta take a bottle of water to drink it. Or that a ceiling or something to fall in in a building that they go into. Not to talk about the schools, but the schools are handling this. But that they can walk into their friends' homes and don't have to worry about the ceiling falling in because stuff hasn't been taken care of for the roots in their community. I just pray that at one point in time or another, that they can benefit off of the sweat, blood, and tears that their, that their ancestors, their forefathers didn't use to be able to give that to them here in the City of Flint. It's a shame that as a citizen of the City of Flint, a citizen that I have spent, I won't say my whole retirement, but my family has been here and I've been back and forth. Because anytime I moved and left the city, I was here at least once or twice a month to check on my properties and my family. But to see what I see before me right now, that ain't happening, this ain't good. This, this is not good. This is not good. Flint has too many milestones and too many hills that they jumped over to make it prosperous here. We could once get it back, but we'll never get it back as long as what we have in front of us is in front of us.
That's right.
I'm waiting for you to pay attention to Russell.
Pay attention.
Do not collide to us. My council person, well, I don't know. She likes partitions, so it could be in the front. It's very scary to come up here because we hear about the things that this council has done to community people.
That's right.
Very frightening, which is one of the first things I said when I came to council. As an eighty-year-old person, I would love for the police to pick me up and bring me down. I stay here as late as you can sometimes. This is Winfrey Carter. I so appreciate you being here tonight. I'm Mr. First Ward Councilperson, Eric Williams. What he did for this city, not just this ward, what he did for all of us.
Ma'am.
He looked at us when we came to council. We knew he would come and sit with us. He would talk to us. We knew he cared. He wouldn't take a trip for another committee in lieu of staying here to help us.
Amen.
He's only been on the council for a little while and already repeating and showing something. I don't know. I hope that there would sometime soon be a resolution that says these partitions are gone. And Mrs. Priestley, you talk about how people don't like you. The council doesn't even like the community.
That's right.
How do you think we feel? It's not about you. It's not ever about the council. It's always the community, always the community. And we tell that you don't care about us.
That's right.
No resolutions to help us.
Nope.
It's all for you, for you, for you.
Spin, spin, spin.
And we need, we need, we need, we deserve, we pay taxes, we pay our taxes.
That's right.
You make up rules that people can't even be interviewed for council if they haven't paid their taxes or they haven't paid their taxes. That's me, that's us. Everybody has a right. You asked resolutions and said first offenders should have proper housing, but you wouldn't put anything in there about child molesters. And I didn't ask for that. I came and asked for that. But you, again, you take up too much of your time. Only Miss Winfrey Carter is looking at me.
That's right.
And the city clerk. You have not to send out a correction to all the mistakes that have been made. People don't know what to do about it. Two weeks, two weeks, please, a correction. Let's see your resolution from the council that says we're gonna. Thank you. That is your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Good afternoon, Bernard Drew. I serve as a pastor of the church of the sixth ward. And I believe in the power of being able in our city to make change in itself. So I'm here just to state community support. Congratulations to the council. I'm here to state this community support for the second item on the agenda, which is the emerging developers program. Over the years, I've worked a lot of people, have hope for the city. But when it comes down to navigating city hall, the building department, planning, zoning, it's a struggle. And I think there's a lot of changes in places to help me, easier to navigate for the average person. But I'll just give a couple of examples of how I think that program can help. I think a lot of cases, because we don't speak those languages as our natural tongue, we get left out of opportunities to impact our community. Thank you. Our program is to help regular folks who are here in the city who have a hard-to-seen empty buildings, empty properties, redevelopments that happen and wait for someone else to come in and fix it. It's to equip regular people with the ability to learn their language, to get some assistance, some capital, so that they can walk through, they can architect, they can walk through zoning and planning, and be able to do business, improve their neighborhoods on their own. I think right now of a guy, he's a barber. He's been renting the same spot, good, he's my barber for years. He's been renting the same spot for probably fifteen years. I'm more than confident because I see how he runs his operation. He could buy a building. He'd be the perfect person. He's a staple in the neighborhood. But this isn't his language. I would love for you all to be able to support this initiative to help folks like him who now I go in the shop and I see not only his kids, but his grandkids coming to shop. That's an opportunity for him to keep making an impact in that neighborhood. And instead of paying increased rent because somebody else comes in from our state and ups the rent where he's renting at, it gives him the opportunity to buy maybe a block of building, beautify it, put his heart, his love into it. And maybe that's something he can pass on to his kids and his grandkids. And so it's scenarios like that, because again, I, I watch his kids, I'm watching his grandkids come up. This is the type of generational change that I hope that our council can get behind. I have no vested interest in this other than I see enough in the building around here that I like to see other people participate in the process. So I would encourage you to have an open mind. If there's questions that maybe can be resolved, I would hope that this is something that can be passed. Thank you.
Hi, it won't be easy today. I just think that Miss, Miss Winfrey Carter's own apology, the way she was talked to the last week, that was a great, she got so nice. I'm here to talk about the water. I just came forward and we got people already got their house on the chopping block. People struggling to keep taxes up, water bills up, and then going to add more money on top of that.
That's right.
And then about the person that came in about the apartment complex, a lot of the veterans, low income, and they from another state. We just cleared out a bunch of apartment buildings for people coming in from other states, leaving a mess and $4 million in taxes, $2 million water bills. And people can put out these low-income apartments because when you come here from another state, who can they get a hold of? Nobody is checking up on these people. By the time somebody notices it's out of control, then we just left with more abandonment. It should be offered to the people in the city. They should be able to make a couple million dollars a year, a million dollars in their revenue in the city because they live here. And then far as the youth in a management company, I mean, who here to check the management company? Are y'all gonna take that on? We barely get to help now. It's just so much more than can be done with these properties. People in the city need them opportunities, just like these big investors and everybody else that come in and do. Because they can offer funds to fund their businesses. Why can't we get offered one for another? And that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about t-shirts and new jeans. I'm talking about the building or two, a little land, a little, you know, property that's gonna keep your generation rich. What's going on? I'm wondering why we can't have that, why we're not deserving of that. Because when the city fell down, we the same people that stayed through that crisis and paid these taxes and stayed in the city and went through it when nobody else could. When people left, they left because they didn't want to go through it. Now that it's a turnaround coming up, you got people coming from all over the country wanting to buy up this thing. This is my turn. It's just my fight. That's what we trying to do. Yes, sometimes we get out of pocket. But because we living, this thing is not, it's just not fair. When do we get some? Ten years where our prices, no money. Then when you sit on the floor and say, still no money, and you're looking at about a thousand dollars. That's not even gonna cover half of these people that do water. And you're looking at about a thousand dollars. That's not even going to cover half of these people that do water bills or property taxes on their homes. And then when you look at, um, your property taxes, you got mine there, you got this one, you got this for such, such a long city. We're not doing anything. J.C. County get all the benefits that Flint get, but we're paying for everybody out of our money. But we are the force. Y'all just, please, don't just beg y'all. Do something for us. Make us proud to be like, yeah, we don't like them, but they showed this for us. Give us something and bring about, about y'all. Besides, we don't owe any, any to them, y'all.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Very nice. If you have a chance to respond, council members, you have two minutes to address, um, any public speaker, but all one response and only when public speakers have occurred, if there's a council response, it's only in two minutes. Is there anyone would like to address?
Yes, thank you so much. And thank you to all the speakers that, um, spoke here today. And let me, I wanna, I'm gonna do two things. One, I'm gonna be brief on, um, Beverly Biggs's comments towards me and her accusations and what she heard about me. Because I want people to hear this. Um, meeting after meeting, Beverly Biggs has came to this meeting and attacked either me or one of our colleagues. And I've seen this movie before. And what, what the word of God said vengeance is the Lord's. So what I'm gonna do, instead of responding and acting, I just want people to watch Beverly Biggs, to continue to watch Beverly Biggs and her demeanor as a grown woman, as someone that made my mother age or my auntie when I aged, get here and make derogatory comments about me, call my job and try to get me fired and all the other accusations she has made. I'm gonna put you on God's team because God said vengeance is the Lord's. And we'll be doing a project down the street from your house. If you ever decide to want to join in and make a positive efforts in the community, you may do that. But you come here, meeting after meeting, and try to attack me. And my family have wanted to come down here, but I told them, don't do that because you not worth it. On, on, um, on the, um, case with Art Wilson and the, um, water prices and the, um, resolution, I'm gonna be looking deep into that. And for the last two years to the young man in the fourth ward, I've been working with a group of people for non-structural block working group, and they're becoming the city council to do a presentation. And we've been working on it for the last two years, so I hear you.
Thank you, ma'am, chair. I just want to thank, um, you all for coming out to the council meeting. We've been trying to get more people in these seats. You've got to become engaged. We need to hear your input. We need to hear your opinions, your concerns. Because for me, I like to hear from, I like to hear from the residents. And I just want to thank those who, who came up to, to bring, um, your, your input. Because I sit here, I write things down, and I listen. I might, you know, bend my head down because I'm trying to write, but I am actively listening to each and every student. Because your voice, what you have to say is important to me.
Thank you.
It's important.
Thank you.
All of your issues and your concerns. I don't care what ward you in, if you call me, I'm gonna try to help you. And that's how it's supposed to be.
That's right.
And you should not feel afraid to come to this, to, to your chamber.
That's right.
To speak up. So I just want to thank you all. And I did listen to each and every, uh, issue or concern that everyone got up and spoke about today. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address? And I'll take my time. Um, Ms. Keating, I actually, I nearby in your, your road, and I know what it looks like. I've taken pictures. I've met you and I've talked, you and I've gone to the light department, you and I've talked to Mr. Freeman from the lamp bay. I don't know what else I can do. I have been trying to get to that place cleaned up. I also have gotten a list of, of number of tickets that had been written in the fourth ward in the last quarter, and it was almost a thousand. The problem is the light board. And I actually met with the, um, city attorney two weeks ago about light board. They have increased the collection of fines by triple from what we did in the prior year, and that's to date. But a lot more needs to be done, and we are following up, and there are discussions about adding more hearing dates. So that, and following up because they're not really following up. So I'm not told when people are going to light board, but the properties that you're looking at are lamp bay. And that is a problem. And I'm, I'm fed up as much as you are. I've done everything I can. Ma'am, Saint Mary's, um, prayer, do you have a flyer? Could you give it to our clerk? Thank you very much. I don't know if I can go that date because I have something going on around that time. I'm just not sure of the exact, but I will be there if I can.
What is the water, ma'am?
Anyways, thank you very much for everyone who spoke tonight. We do listen, even if my head is down as I am typing. I have no sun everything. Thank you. We are now going, um, we now have a request from the legal department for an executive session. Would you like to?
The law department requests a closed session under MCL fifteen point two sixty-eight one E. Specifically discuss settlement strategy in connection with pending litigation specifically. It's an administrative action type matter brought by the state of Michigan Department of Environment, Three Lakes and Energy.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'm only going to the second session.
Is there support? It's been moving properly seconded to go into executive session. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, ma'am, chair, very good to the city attorney. This has to deal with the water prices, right? This is the one that I do not know.
It, it doesn't specifically tie into the concerned pastors' litigation. This administrative action, it, we seek to tentatively resolve it with an administrative consent order. And regardless, it does concern the drinking water aspect of things. And there are representatives from the Department of Public Works to talk about what's contained in the administrative consent order and the substantive items.
So with that being said, um, I will not go into.
Thank you.
Because I, anything that, that concerns the water, the water crisis, any of that, I feel should be put out in the public. I will not be put in a situation whereas I cannot discuss whatever I need to discuss to the residents.
Thank you.
I'm gonna always, always be transparent when it comes to it. That has to deal with that. So I'll just hold it down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I heard this were they first. I used to go into executive session during my council meeting. Um, I don't think it's the flex that Minissa or Eric thinks it is, as she will be, Daryl have to anything. And then she will come out here asking the questions, as she would in this important position. It's not a flex. Thank you.
Of the audience members, constituents to order, please. Thank you, allow me to not hear what our, our colleagues are saying as we were over there. Thank you.
I would be going, I would be going to go into executive session and basically, I would be going to go into executive session. And someone who been out here marching and went to that, that marched for the, um, water prices and was out here on the front line of the fight for the water. I owe it to my.
Please, this is your first warning.
I really don't care.
I owe it to, um, the frontliners that was out there fighting for this water crisis to go into executive session and listen, and listen to what, um, and listen to what the lawyers have to say about.
This is your first warning.
I owe it to these residents who put me in a position to go into executive session.
I'm bringing the lady in the mask to order for separately clapping. The lady in the mask.
Ma'am, this, uh, officer, this person. I have a paper rolling up the chair.
There's a paper to the rolling up the chairs.
Is she calling her police?
People on the TV lady, the city on that couch in the chair, get out that house and come down here. They see no council people.
Pour the water.
The bail, the bail first, the second order, arrested for clapping. TV lady, get down here. They think it's cute. That's why people out on the street dying because they got the police in here doing their dirty work because they scared of the fucking citizens. Yeah, that's what I said scared. You got the fucking police bringing you here. You're not scared. Bring your ass here yourself. I said scared. I, I'm not scared to repeat what I said. I don't hide behind no fake man or none of that. No, I'm talking to her about you. Then nobody asked you to jump in. Because baby, we in, we here, that's how we can have you there. Oh, I know I can.
So you talking, you doing that high. But baby, your day is coming along with high.
Because I'm not going to play the bullshit with none of y'all. Because I ran motherfucking Lawrence Johnson where that bitch cried because I stood up for the citizens. I ain't go there for taking no motherfucking money to run the line more. Talk about service park, I rode by that bitch only a quarter of the clean.
Y'all need to go fix y'all church on Franklin Street.
Bitch, I'm not, my church ain't on Franklin Street, baby. First of all, in my church, I don't have a church. And I don't go to the church on Lawrence or Franklin. And, and what, what are you trying to say? What are you trying to say? No, I, I go to a church here, but I don't hold a church. Beck, you know what? You know what? Bring your ass back here. We can have you this bullshit.
You ain't even worth it.
No, you ain't worth it, bitch. No, you ain't worth it. Yeah, yeah, that's a, well, yeah, that's a child right there. That's my grandson. What? He watch y'all at the ass all the time. So now he gonna watch his granny at more.
And you talking.
Because motherfucker, I'm coming for your shit at school. With your trite ass.
They talk all that shit they talk, and they gonna talk about child being in here. Y'all ain't got respect for nobody.
Y'all ass trying to hear in that word. But I'm coming for that education license too, baby.
Because I admit you out there tomorrow when you come to work. Look at my face. Cause my great child in your room.
Had them motherfuckers kiss with your ass.
Don't mess around.
What you say?
Don't mess around.
Oh, I'm just around.
What you say?
I come up there. We have a resident that just assaulted another resident. We have a resident that just assaulted another resident. That lady just punched Paul. That lady just punched Paul.
Come on, chief. Come on, chief. Come on, chief. Come on, chief. She eighty seven years old. Come on, chief.
That's mine. That's my purse. That's mine.
They should've just been at the executive meeting when they got roughed. They should've went to their executive meeting.
They ain't even going to executive meeting now.
They should've went in there when she got up on that podium. And all this would've been important.
I pray y'all get every dolly y'all want. Cause you gone burning hell.
One more order. We're out of recess and I'm bringing the lady in the glasses and white jacket to order for yelling out continuously. I'm going to start checking the order.
My name is Miss Terry. I'm not the lady in the white jacket, I got my name, Miss Terry. And I got your point of order.
Okay, well, I'm just bringing her to order, so you know.
I got your point.
Alright, roll call please.
Ms. Lewis.
Present.
Ms. Murphy.
Present.
Ms. Bracy.
Present.
Ms. Murphy, partner is not here. Ms. Murphy is not here. Ms. Chad. Present. Ms. Figer is not here. Ms. Oregon. Present. You have six members present?
There are six members present, go ahead, Ms. Murphy, yeah, please, yes.
So, we going, be going into executive session just to get more information on this, uh, consent agreement that we need to be voting on. I think it's important that I as a councilperson make the best decision. If I need to ask questions that I don't need to be discussing, that could jeopardize this case. I think it's so important for me to go into executive session so I can hear both sides, so I can make, uh, wise decision. And I don't need to come out here, which I have seen some of my colleagues do time after time after time. I don't need to come out here and ask or try to then figure out what is going on when, if I go into executive session. And I need to ask questions, I can ask questions in executive session versus we coming out here and because I didn't go into executive session, I don't know what's going on with this consent agreement. I can get up to speed with what's been going on with the litigation of this case. Where we at? And give my input in executive session and also give my input out here when I do get the floor. So I be educated on what's going on when it comes down to this litigation with this water. Yes, we do have the sign. Yes, the residents do have the sign. But how can I make a, uh, a wise decision on something and I won't even go into executive session? I think that's, uh, uh, bad representation as a councilperson to our constituents. For us not to go into executive session was something disimportant when we faced, we coming up to ten years since this water crisis. And we wanting to go into executive session because we feel we need to be transparent. Try, we, we ain't the resident, we are elected official. So we owe it to our residents and to those who watch it or those who understand. I am going into this executive session as a councilman for the third ward that represent residents in the third ward. To do what I can to make the best decision when it comes down to this consent order agreement that we need to go into or getting ready this time we vote on. Whether I vote it up or vote it down. I need to know and I'm go always going to executive session. So I can hear what's going on behind the tone, because I'm not know already. So there are some things we just can't discuss and open up. And some people just don't seem like they get it. They want to get up here and grandstand for the audience or whoever and make it seem like they want to whatever. But I'm going into executive session because it's the right thing to do and the people voting for me. And I'm gonna continue to do what I can to, um, speak, be the voice of these people. I'm not on that side no more, I'm on this side. So I need to know what's going on. Thanks, my brother.
Anyone else? Anyone else? There are no others in session? I, oh, we get second round. Anyone in the second round? There are none?
Yes, uh, go ahead. You know what, Councilor Murphy, this is my grandstanding. And if I decide that I'm not gonna go into executive session, that's me.
That's my right.
And like I said, in my opinion, I feel that everything that has to do with the water crisis, everything. Everything the public should know about. It's been ten years. Nothing has happened. This is ridiculous to keep going in and out of the executive sessions, session for what? So no. And it's not about grandstanding. It's about, in my opinion, doing us right for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yes. Thank you very much. Uh, my colleague, if y'all just heard what my colleague said, my colleague said, we going into executive session for what? You just answered your question, for what means? You going into executive session so you can understand for what? But because you don't want to go into executive session for what, you don't know because you don't even going in here. So that's your opinion, that's your, um, ideology, your philosophy or whatever you believe. You don't want to go into executive session, don't go. But for me, as a coun, as a councilman and as an activist who been on the front line fighting for this water crisis ever since, public effort ever since, ever since this emergency manager. I owe it to these community to go into executive session so I can figure out what's going on. So you don't have to go, don't go, stay here, we got enough votes to go in there.
We know.
I'm there.
We already know that. We already know that.
Anyone else? See none, this is the vote to go into.
Well, they done already said how he gonna move. They done said how he gonna move.
I'm out on those bills. I'll be out there tomorrow.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Yes.
Bracy, yes.
No.
Yes. You voted six yes for now?
They got their votes, well, it don't matter. It don't matter. It don't matter. I've been, I've been out there for a week for Quentin, I, and I'm good. Recall, I've been out there for a week and I'm good.
You hit a nerve with him.
With his shitty ass. He go everywhere he go, he shit on himself. They took us last Monday because they stopped it because he had shit on himself right here in council meeting. He come in with a different pair of pants on, didn't y'all notice it? Shitty. And butch, I don't know what butch doing today. She want to be a girl one week and a boy the next. I don't know why you got faith in these retarded ass people up here.
Because Paul said he want to press charges. Even if she did, she did it. And he was standing there.
I ain't, I ain't get it, I ain't really get all that.
Even if she did.
Even if she did, she did. I want this.
She ate us up, he was old.
It is.
But when she did turn his hand, they got their five votes.
When she said, we got their vote, we got our vote.
Yeah, he don't need to. That was kinda. Ms. Gladys said, they said, they said they finna get a, cause I passed her some more money. That's what Ms. Gladys was saying. She said, Ms. Gladys just said.
Love your friend.
So why they keep putting on agenda, they gonna close any line of courses?
They trying to get rid of this, the, the building, that, that, that makes twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollars worth.
That's the baby that need to wake to sleep.
They so disrespectful though. He just had, he got, they got their five votes, they got their six votes.
Oh, he said, he ragged on that, he definitely. Tetra is six, I don't know why nobody calling him fat is five, because nothing is fat about him.
Oh, it's six now, it's six now.
It's the tetra is six, it's six now.
Nah, I said, I said, the federal's five plus work.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, because you, you could tell which one, wh- what is so disheartening is Eric May's wood talk to the public.
That's what I was trying to tell y'all.
Nah, I know.
Six or six, she's five, was the same house. He went in there to put that woman out with her nine year old son was in there. When he had that gun, that's the same house. Because I think he dropped the girl off over there because we played cards together. And ain't nobody in that house. He's not even in that house.
So that's the address he used.
That's the address he used. Because I knocked on the door to see if he was gonna give me Quincy, uh, sign for Quincy ass.
Right. Boy, he showing you where he is.
Yeah, yeah.
He, he don't even.
He went to her phone one of the day, this how you do when you work together, my first word, constable. And he went to Dave, when they was up there, went to her phone, and she had a second one, granted how we do together. But like I said, I sit up there and I'm like, tell me one person that ever came up here and thanked y'all for anything. They, she couldn't, I asked her that once that last week, week before last, not one person, if, if you know it's their boy, any question I ask you. Because when I ask you, I don't ask you. What I want to know, if you can't answer it, then it must mean you ain't doing it. Only thing they responded to was when you called them out to somebody else, they did not answer why they knew.
He gonna always, he gonna always give me, he gonna always give me his two minute a thing, always watching.
But, but see, the thing is, he's supposed to answer why the water hike and why they gonna let another company come in from somewhere else. That's what he was supposed, that's his business, that's what they were supposed.
That's why, that's why I done been on the road.
Both of them, look, Dale didn't have nothing, what's wrong with?
Cock in the road, uh, out there by the, go to Blue Bell Beach.
Tell me, you talking about, you talking about Hill Creek, uh, Jewel Drive, Seashore Drive, Pollin, all in that area over there, yeah, yeah, you, uh, you get over there.
And, and they have, they had a town hall meeting, I'm gonna go find out when they talking all media, they pretty ain't never been to none of them. That's why I'm gonna be putting signatures when they had a meeting.
Yeah. And he, but see, he don't see it, and he finna get put out, he not even paying attention. Couple of these people that's came, they never came to council to talk today, two people I recognize. They just said, well, he, it's, it's so warped up in his mind, they see dollar signs. That's, that's why the people ain't getting them, because they see dollar signs. You go look at it, if you just put up there that ninety-four point seven million came in, the five oh C three ones versus the people, zero for the people. And look at all the five oh one C O threes, five, got money. Yeah.
That's what I was saying, when Mary was talking, he talking about homeowners getting alone, why we gotta get alone? Y'all giving all these rich people money that was meant for young like these corporations, come here. And y'all get an offer and, and then you tell the people that's living here, get along.
A one O Flint, can you clip that for us?
For offer Flint, when, when, when I was working in that building.
If, if A one O Flint on, can you go clip that, we'll play it tomorrow. What up, my good brother, Lumi?
Quincy got mad at us, he know, because he didn't want to show his ID, because he was a dealer. See, one thing funny, every meeting they have at their local foundation, it's documented. It's documented. It's documented.
See, Ms. Gladys back there checking the, my bad. Ms. Ms. Gladys back there checking the police. Then with her back there.
That's why they live in, so they can.
Yeah, nah, this is a nightmare, really. I'm gonna give it, I'm gonna give it to probably, I'm gonna give it to ten probably.
Giving it to ten?
Yeah, I'm gonna probably give it to ten. If they don't put us out, I'm not going to, they still gonna get put out in there.
She be looking over here, she trying to catch this.
Yeah, every time.
She can't breathe either. That hair gonna look up like her kids sneaking this.
I'm just telling them.
Yeah, she got it, she don't even know it's happening.
You see, Ariel just, just as cool as the other side of the pillow. Ariel. The people want to talk to you. Ariel, the people want to know what just happened.
Hello, America. I'm Ariel Mitchell here, uh, talking from Flint, Michigan, City Hall, City Hall. Yeah, who want to know what just happened there? Just what happened, this is just what happened. The people's, the concerned revens of Flint, they took their thing back in their back room, they want to get paid under the table. But, but all the money, the preachers, but they don't want to. They don't want to tell us this stuff, just like over in Middle East, the two generals making, making war with all the dockies in, about forty million. Forty million black peoples in Africa running, they starving right now as we speak. And nobody saying nothing about it. And now they want to impeach the two generals who started the war and like nobody, and they get, just because they don't know how to blow up Israel, they got them don't, and drunk like. The same thing is happening in Flint. They don't want to check down there early in the governor Snyder, Snyder, who started all this junk and sagging off with all them roof and all that junk. In Buffalo, New York, they trying to make Flint look like a dollar store when that little white boy went in and shot about twenty, twenty dockies and got away. And now they want to get the death penalty, but they fighting that, they don't want to kill little white boy. And then, and then little, and all this junk of people, look, look, they got them back here, they getting grinning, but they ain't taking. Everybody had a sweat on the way yesterday when they shot all them people, so they act like they, they looking for that mental dude, for them talking, they hear right. Put me out and dropped me off in front of Woody and Jimmy High School. That school been there, they kick, put me out of eighth grade and put me on McKinley, McKinley, they still there too. So I walked, I walked from there, they asked, where you going? This premeditated Jim Jones, Purple Kool-Aid generation saying that, they take, they do, and you don't do it, and then when the other, they only, I ain't had no money in a long time, I'm gonna make it work.
We gonna make, we gonna, we gonna, wishing it would make it work, but I. Oh, but I thank your Ariel family, that's, we just got a commentary, you know, commentary from Ariel basically, they doing backdoor deals again. This is not what Mickey saying, this is what the commentary from my, uh. Hey, Robin, Little Mama, thanks for tapping in with us. Joanne Williams, thanks for tapping in with us, as y'all can see, that was Ariel, uh, uh, city council reporter to give us a commentary on what's going on. As you can see, once again. Flint, the residents of Flint zero, and the five oh one C threes, they winning, baby. They are winning. Said five oh one C threes, I win, I gotta get me a five oh one C three. I gotta get me a nonprofit. And as you can see, finally, they done ran everybody up out of here. When you, when the police go to taking people out, that's usually what happened to us. Would it do, uh, uh, Mr. John Snow himself? Nigga, this, nigga, this Jay Gaddis, would it do good people, would it do Patrick Jean, I see you keep down. Spring, Harold, Chris Michael, I see y'all family. Do the new level, would it do Beverly Barnes, what's going? Do the new level, would it do Beverly Barnes, what's going on, Ross Garrison, I see you, Robin Carr, Aaron Brown Jr., oh, we definitely on the careful. Jeff, oh, oh, okay, 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 okay.
This is for Quincy Murphy, he keep going to work, shitting on himself, he needs to resign and sit his shitty ass down. Resign Quincy Murphy, and sit your shitty ass down. If your mama didn't tell you when you boo-boo, you buy Depends, you buy pull-ups, when you boo-boo on yourself, you buy pull-ups. And this is for him, I'ma leave him for him, if he take him home, he'll use him probably.
Only in council can we get this, and the views of the citizens just walking up to the camera, not those of eighteen news media group. Family, I'm just, I'm just putting this together right now, boy, I will not be going to family get together on that side of the family. I'm just going to my dad people, I'm cool. I'm, I ain't put it on you, I was good, nah, it ain't on you. I didn't know she was finna do that, like, I just had to do a disclaimer. I, nah, my back was turned back there. I, nah, my back was turned the other way.
Your back was turned the other way?
Yeah, I walked over there, yeah, I seen it, when I seen it, it was too late, shit, I'm sorry, may God bless us all, but I did do the disclaimer. Hey, how you doing? Nah, I won't move it, I said, I'm just gonna have to rest it. Yeah, I, I won't move it.
It's not about us, it's about you catching the faces and responses and activity of what's going on over here.
Right, right.
And you've been embarrassing them so many times.
Right.
That they're just, they're not, and they're trying to drive anything they can to get you away from here, but you're first of all, right.
Oh, yeah, 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 nah, they do, yeah.
I'm sure you'd be there.
Nah, I'ma let them, I'ma go on out and take a stand, I'ma get arrested that day if they try to make you move, I'm right here.
They can't do that, I think as long as you keep this past clear, so they can't use that against you.
It was not about stuff, that was poor stuff, and they was trying to say it wasn't, even did trip over, that was poor, that wasn't mine.
Too bad she didn't find her face like that.
You ain't lying.
I shouldn't sound like that.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, understandable, it's, it's all in human, nah, I ain't tripping on it.
I looked online for some other equipment for you, I said, well, if, if he had to change his tripod, I found something.
Nah, I, I, yeah. Nah, I, I, that's what I did, I gave her the money to go order the, uh, the, the, uh, the, uh, the body, before we can put it on the camera, we can still sit up here.
Yeah, that's exactly right, there's other ways to do things, you don't wanna get nasty.
Yeah, nah, that's what, we, we was prepared for that, cuz she was already ordering a body thing.
Okay.
Yeah, nah, 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 we gonna come prepared for it.
And you know what, it would be good to have somebody maybe on the other side, so they can get another angle.
Nah, I am, yeah, that's what I, yeah, that's what we been working on, yeah. You know, I'm, 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 believe me, we'll have it by the summer, we'll have it all together.
Okay, alright, good, yeah, don't let them bully you.
Oh, nah, 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 I, that day, I go ahead and get duck walked up out of here on that day, but I'ma sue the city though, I'ma tell you. Yeah, yeah, but I mean, when you got lawlessness going on, you know, this is, yeah, I mean, I mean, cuz personally, I mean, she just came up to the model, and her gave her thirty seconds or sixty seconds, what she was gonna say, come on, let's go out, for just the handcuff, but this is what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, cuz they wanna be bullies, they wanna, you know, like, well, yeah, scream.
Yeah, but, that's why she mad, cuz I got that, she gonna say, we, we chopping, no, it's not, if you cutting up, it's just being sent, I can't help it if somebody chopping up and sending it to you.
That's right.
I just play it, yeah, I just like Quincy, when he said up there about him, uh, he took that money from Asher Capital, they sent me that, I got sent that clip, of course, I'ma, I'ma play it. Because what you said, but this out of your own words, and it ain't, it ain't, this what, what Mickey or Winter said.
Right.
We use your own words that you said, you know what I'm saying, that's why I knew he was gonna come in here today pissed, I'm like, you know, they, they been watching this.
Don't shoot the messenger.
That's what I'm saying, that's why, I'm just here to deliver the message, let the people see, yeah. No, thank you, I appreciate y'all for tuning in, and you have a blessing, yeah. Because the COO is, you know, they, you, you know, them back there going to jail when this is done, they going to jail, uh, uh, mor- uh, moral jail. Like Quincy saying, he was on their side, he back on that side, man, you never leave a side, if you was fighting from their side, you'd be fighting when you up there. But he don't understand that concept of being a fighter, you don't, you don't, you don't stop fighting because you up there, you keep the fight going on. But hey, like they said, more back, backdoor deals, and they can handle it. I put a post on my page this morning about a man trying to leave, you can't take the emotion, take your emotions out of it, you'll never be a great leader. I'm not knocking the third ward, but y'all need some leadership in the second, third, sad, what's going on up here at council. Quincy, too much emotion, that's why you gotta, you gotta take emotions, I don't want you getting in them seats like that, I know, I could, I could never be in no position like that, cuz I'd be too busy trying to help the people, I couldn't see nobody coming down here telling me they roof is leaking, and it's raining in their daughter room, or kid room, or, I done been shot at and missing that, I, I couldn't be in no, no, no position like that, I quit if I couldn't help them. But that's just how I'm made, and how other people are not, some people here enrich themselves and not enrich the community. But this is what we going through, family, you can be eighty years old and get took out of here. Right now, the lawlessness in this joker is tripped there. Well, you know, in Flint, you know, when they, they down here, it's just, the, the moral compass in Flint, fires in its politics is zero. You know, I understand, but when you see the citizens retaliating, and Quincy ain't paid attention to the one, when the one gentleman that came up and talked, when he said he blamed them for not coming up here, he just came, you know what I'm saying, he don't see that, that could be his ass, people waking up to be like, nah, we finna get out during this recall, but instead of him looking at, let me do for the people, he steady wanna keep getting in his feelings, I wouldn't care when nobody came up here and said. That's just like, they been putting my picture up every time they see a picture, putting me up here, putting it out there, putting out my phone number, my address, all of that, I'm, you think I'm finna be tripping? Just please don't come to the house, that's all I beg, don't do it, cuz I'ma call the police on you, I'ma handle it the right way. Just like that, the, uh, the gentleman, Mr. P G, came up here and said, they giving all this money away in this two fourth wards. Oh, Judy did, just like she don't understand what they saying. But, you get people who do everything for a dollar when you can be bought. Oh, nah, they would've put me out, yeah, I am, when I come up here to record, so they make, shake me up out of here, you know, I ain't gonna go resisting, but I'ma go ahead and take the, uh, the long walk out the chamber to that exercise, and then I put in the, Yeah, but this is showing, this is showing, well, we in a city that's not for the residents, I can say, when you got a majority of block five, like Quincy just said, we got our six votes, we don't need you. Man, OG Wig, let me say this good, brother, and this especially for you, OG Wig, it didn't take that press conference, and I do appreciate that, that the goat Angie Mack put out there. Now, when she put that press conference, you know, I knew, but this the second time, that he has responded to the, the speakers that came up there. Eric Mays would never did that, good or bad, he always responded to the, the, the public speakers, and that's like a telltale sign right there for me. That's a telltale sign, when you can't even, good or bad, however you feel, sometimes being quiet tells a lot about the individual. But I said it before, and ain't no disrespect, I get it, when you get selected for a sixth, you there to do a job, you not there to, to go do your agenda. Nah, it's beyond playing down the middle, this ain't no middle plan. Yeah, nah, it's an agenda, and, and the residents of it are not part of it, I look at this clown back here, Paul, he back there to the chorus acting like a eighty-year-old woman, some, a cancer survivor. Nah, he, he ain't like me put that camera on me.
And that means we didn't incident? I know. One was there, he spoke, two was there, she, I, I, I watched it, one spoke, two spoke, four spoke, and whoever.
That's showing, boy, you need to know what Paul is.
The vice president, the person of finance, and the new council person, they all spoke. I'm not even watching, all my mother. All my mother spoke, I thought I was.
Yeah, I can tell you, I mean, this ain't no knock, this is what it's like, that, that the Flint City Council. This is crazy, this up here, but if, if eight one oh Flint, if your dude got that, hit that eighteen inbox, we'll play it in the morning, you know, we don't want nobody to be accused of, I'm just saying, you can, saying somebody said something, like, y'all know. Yeah, this is what we going through, family. And, uh, uh, Councilwoman Burns is in the club, I mean, in the chat, good, good, good evening, Councilwoman Burns. I don't wanna hear no more saying this is what the emails created this, when you take thieves, this is what you get at a city council, this what money can buy, this is, this is what your opera money has drove your council people to do. Not the ones that's fighting, but the ones that's, that's not fighting. How you doing, Ms. Gladys?
I'm doing, cuz I'm getting ready to ask him why we don't have an ombudsman sworn in.
You know why we ain't got an ombudsman? So, that.
Cuz we haven't had a sworn-in ombudsman since the emergency managers that Snyder sent here.
Wow.
They only answer personal attacks. So, they don't ask them in a personal attack manner, that's the only way they go answer.
Oh, you, um, I, you know why they ain't got no ombudsman? Why would you put somebody in and then, that can really come and handle some of the cases that's going on, just?
Ethics, you know what, that's, the ombudsman is our ethics committee.
That board is, that board should be, uh,
A mandatory.
Yeah, but, but, but what it is, is so bad that they, the ethics accountability board can't do nothing, it's like they powerless, how you can, you see the residents is getting the police sicked on them. You see, you can see the, you can see Liddell cutting up, Eva cut up, you can see Candace cut up, you can see Quincy over there cutting up, but the ethics accountability board, they act like they don't see nothing.
Did you see the way Louis was looking at him?
Yeah, oh, yeah, she gave him.
I mean, she was, had the devil in her.
Is the devil, well, she hate me anyway, she doxxed me, they put my address out on Facebook, put my, she on there, on this fake page.
Did I tell you, yesterday, I was going, coming from my house over on McKinley in the night court, and I come on circle drive to Atherton Park, at, at, to Atherton Road, and a police officer, I was here, and a police officer was coming this way, and he looked at me, and I pulled out, and I watched, I turned and looked, and he did absolutely U-turn, and he followed me all the way to Miller Road.
That's crazy, that's crazy.
And I think that they have sick police on me.
Oh, you know they gonna do that, cuz you, you, you pissing them off, you pissing them off, you is really pissing them off, so.
I need to, and I need to unseat as many of them as that I can.
I'm with you with that, because that's what I, I'm glad that Mr. P G did finally listen to what you said, they, like he told her today, it's two fourth wards. Yeah, that's all I was trying to tell him, but he was, I get it, we on two different sides, how we look at things, but when you can sit up and see, how you coming down here, when you seeing they giving, my thing is this, ninety-four point seven million came here, put that, put that ninety-four point seven, ninety-four point seven million that came, the people versus the five oh one C threes, who got the most money, the people, zero, the five oh, five oh one C threes winning.
And I was looking at this, and they're still spending money.
Cyrus Park get another twenty-five thousand after she just got fifty thousand.
That's right.
Yeah, she trying to get another, she just got fifty thousand.
Oh, he's back.
And she finna get another twenty-five thousand.
Good. And when you go to the park, does it look any different?
Nope.
And when, and when they buy something, and when they buy something for the park, it's the cheapest, just like these chairs, get your ass up on it.
Yeah, it's hard to get it.
Because we should be able to talk without them having to feed.
But, but, when he cut.
You know what it is, they hate that we have come together as a one, and they really hate me. They hate me with a passion.
Oh, yeah.
Cuz when she says I've gotten my first warning, and I say, I really don't care, I really don't care.
But, 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 but to me, when, this, this how you know that, when Leonard don't ready for this council seat, when do y'all couldn't interact with the council people?
Well, that's why I turned around and she was him, and I was like, you was, because what we say, don't hit them at all, they just go right in their little room and spend away.
Right, right, that's why I'm.
Until we come together and say, we're done, you got to go.
Right, right, that's why I'm tripping, it's like, it, it's, it's crazy, it's crazy how they treating the residents though.
It is.
To them, it's just a money grab.
And you know, and when I was done, uh, Ms. Louis, I can't even look at how I'm speaking for my little three minutes, I mean, she hated, I mean.
They don't, but, but they don't respect the residents, that's the problem.
But that's just using up my time.
Yeah.
Because when I can't talk about the issues of Flint, the lack thereof getting done, and I have to ask these people to respect it, and you know Eva Worthing, Eva Worthing was in that room when I walked in here, Eva Worthing did not come out of that room until I had already spoke.
Right.
When I got my three minutes done, she came out of that room and she kinda took her seat.
Yeah, cuz she don't wanna take no thing.
Cuz she don't wanna hear me say how useless she is.
Nah, they can't, see, they can't handle constructive criticism, they want you to think they doing everything, you, only putting the city more in debt, raising more taxes, water rates.
And it's not even a city anymore, it's a corporation.
Yeah, yeah, I wish they would admit that.
Corporation, I told them, you are a corporation.
Yeah, and that's the problem. Yeah, and that's the problem. Me too.
I don't know how your son speaks through all of this. This little boy. It just cranks me up, all this, just sleeps. And his mama sticks up for him, on top like that around my side. Oh, Granny and Great Granny, oh my word! You do not look like a granny, I have to say. And you know what? If you just remember when that fire chief was the police officer that tried to arrest me during the water crisis? No, I don't. That man right back there, that black guy, he was a police officer that, and then they put up in here during the water crisis to, um, call people out. And now, and now, he's been graduated right on up to the chief of fire department. Oh, really?
Yeah, one time he was running both...
Now, I never seen him in no fire, uh, uniform.
He was wearing his back there, right? Yeah, he was a chief, uh, chief.
No, I'm talking back there with twenty seventeen, he was a police officer.
Eighteen years younger, this lady, eighteen years younger.
And now he's going over there to find out what they...
There's nothing she can get done by herself. And all that she do is, I don't care, she, she was like she said, she, she would apologize, she, the way she, she, and, and she does it too.
This is what happens, so please, see, look how he walked up on her.
Oh, he walked up on her. She pushed him up, really, that's every... She, he was in her, he was up in her face. And she pushed, she just really very... Yeah, he walked up on her.
Yeah, that's, that's on film, he walked up on her, so when she pulled her coat back, I just, he raised him, and he trying to claim that she hit him in the chest. She, he got, he got shit to follow from behind, he didn't follow from behind his fall.
But they shouldn't have moved him.
They shouldn't have, she, she didn't hit him, she did not hit him.
And Liddell!
And, and that means they made her guilty without even asking her thoroughly and thoroughly investigating, they made her be guilty of something.
Because she said she assaulted somebody, and they came hurt, instead of going, if somebody gets better, let me make sure it doesn't happen. Because somebody say it don't make it true, that's more than...
She was, she was, she can't...
She didn't serve herself and answer no question.
Cut that, cut, clip that part. Yeah, 'cause he walked up on her, and then he got all these things, and he's standing in the middle aisles and all that stuff, and nobody telling him it's in the wrong way. That right there is, is a death trap, right there with that towel on it, somebody gonna even see that, he's gonna go, that's, that's a fire hazard. That's a safety hazard. Paul even talking about why he hit his wife.
No, I'm talking about she... Yeah, I wish he could have been, I don't wanna leave with a minute.
And these police couldn't hang some other...
I was like, boy, let it go.
Hold on, dude, that's what my, my sister, that's what my sister, before she died, and I say, mother, the lonely don't do this. She need that to back up.
Who told some police, like, take this?
They called. He called, he called her, he called her a dumbbeef. And she didn't see him.
No, she didn't.
He walked all up on her and stuff, she said, look at him, how he, look at how he all up on her. Man, he trying to get at, he was trying to put her out too.
Because he didn't know what she said.
Look how he do.
Look at him, how he up in her face. He all on her in her face and stuff, and she trying to get back, but she opening up her jacket, and he playing...
I wonder if she got some grace.
Whole flip, it's like a dumbbeef hit me, then it's like this tape or something, like he put her neck and everything on it, it's all on the clip.
I told somebody to give me creepy photos, they like, he alright, I'm like, no.
It's on YouTube. That's why he posting that on you?
He only showed the people reaction on his show, he never showed the baby, he only showed people reaction.
She can, she, we got the video, she did not hit him, he hit her, he was up on her, that is so wrong.
Why would he lie on that lady, like, what kind of man you would lie on an old woman? Just no integrity, man. Boy, he walked up, the video, somebody showed the video, he walked up on her, and she was kinda, he walked up on her, and then she kinda like put her hand in the way, didn't even, didn't even exactly hit him.
Yeah, she had to back up.
But for her to say she assaulted, and then tell that man to get up out that woman's face, that speaks volumes for her.
God, the fire chief back there, the head of the fire.
You remember me?
I ain't with nothing there.
Oh, always, girl, you know, you the woman that gave me that chuching. That's still live?
Yeah, they still live, Ariel.
Hello, America, you still stand, stand tuned to this unprecedented situation? With Paul Harvey better respect his elders.
He called her a bee.
What? Oh, my God, do you hear that, uh, the people's in New York, what Paul done done? He better, he, he expect his equipment, he moved the equipment to keep people's women know what, what they doing to the Flintstones in Flint, he moved it, just 'cause somebody tell him do this, he do that. Because he act like he scared of something, I ain't never saw him move, so he didn't, now he done really messed up. But jumping on the old lady, I mean, yeah, what? Man, I ain't know the boy done that, but, he was, he was sitting on that button, I mean, look, America, uh, see, they always want stuff all out of place, for somebody like me, they ain't getting no, no money regularly every week, like I did before, but I ain't pressing the issue. If this other big black guy was here, what that guy, King Thunk? He went to the army, that, uh, he had to see one...
Art Wilson.
Art Wilson was here, he was just giving me my money just like that, like he did before, and don't think that nothing. Because for other people wants to go through a thing like they doing... They rather start a fight, so we can get all about stuff like they in Africa, that the dark, 'cause there's more black peoples in America, in the whole world than the other colors. Even the Indians, the red people, and they want them to fight like between each other, that's the lumbalakam all over that stuff over them. I mean, oh, in the, oh, here we go, hey, I mean, now look, they say you better watch your mouth and watch your talk, sir, but I ain't even got my daddy picture, my daddy, my, my momma and my daddy had it. In the order, they gonna take something wrong with me 'cause I don't, oh, and my sister got my stimulus money that they sent, I didn't know she had, and they gonna send some more stimulus money over. See, I'm getting, they, they say, see what you talking, you can't handle the money, 'cause you need to pay, I don't need no pay, I, I'm off. More I talk, the more, I'm, I'm, it must be that Flint River water I be drinking. I mean, uh, they be, they, they want every black person in the world to do like they doing on the Middle East. About forty, uh, fifty million of them over there starving, they don't know how, like that ship rented through that bridge, and all that cargo on top of that, all that food gonna rot, you know, the people don't give a care, and all if people got grin on their face, every time somebody get shot up in the smurf, or they can't take it off or nothing, it's still talking now, that's James stuff. When those grab bags, that getting drunk, and, and girls up in the, open up, up there like it. All in the USA, take that.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was, I thought it was trying to change the truth. Now that generator is changing the truth.
I can see. I told you. All these are part of, and I'm like, it's all in the part that a paper on that is, the rest of it, I'm such a... She can't, she don't, she don't own that. So I asked her, if I said, "Ask her..." He said, "She..."
What, you just hold an iPhone, what did that shit do?
He said, "Don't see her hurt, hurt, or anything." She made me think people think she was over, she said, "Jennison, Jenny, Jenny is over." I'm like, "Keep it, Jenny, say beautiful." The man said to me, "Yeah, I'm gonna roll past there, and it's not heaven, but I guess it's because she down comes in here for a lot of things." He said, "She need help over, so as many people want to stop that truck, come to us, we not giving them help." He said, "I need, I need to drive that off, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wipe it on the roof, and it's trash all on me, and I said, 'Call me, now this is my thing.'" She need money over what, and because she needs to park it beautiful. Bags, bags, they give you everything when you get to the car plate, they will even come and pick up the trash. You don't have to fuck with it, you pick the trash. And they said, "The trash is the stuff, where they, they got, they got their own hook, cut it out." So, what you know, when all the guys...
There's always some, right there, there's always some, right there. Woman, the trash is, oh, no, Mickey, I was serious.
Oh my God. Oh my God.
Everybody get it out of here. And then, it's not, it's, it's, why it's, it's, why it wants that box, who wants that box? The wife wants to be watched. Why it wants to be watched?
This for the day, he probably didn't want to come in. He ain't got nothing. It's all my shit. My ass in there, you know, you just keep the boys tonight.
They get ready to gather to come there, and they get these big dudes starting to react, and they trying to be a section, the nation's, but, 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 from the interest of the minds. But he, they trying to make sure they don't benefit all the interests of that man. When that money comes, it's not, they're not getting the interest, because the money's in the bank, it's not in the...
They already made.
They got some, they're... To let them know, that is, to let them know that, uh, people have done that. She wanna talk to the police. Thank you guys for putting her out.
She, she...
She lied to them. She lied. That's why I'm always saying, "She's not, man, I'm telling them, I'm telling them..." They putting out another lady doing recess. Well, whoever told you I'm gonna do that? I know, I understand, but tell them, that's how that says to me, if you think, I don't change my attitude. It's on anybody's hands, but it's good, because the same way that bitch got that seed. Because the same way that bitch gonna lose that seed, but I see, come on, baby. Come on, baby. The women be pushing the... Saying, "God had to..."
She just went to the chief, but we, she just went to the chief and told the chief to put you out.
That's fine. It's fine, I don't need, I didn't threaten her, and I didn't threaten Quacey, but I don't need...
Who gonna threaten Big Bird?
Because like I say...
Let's go get the papers so we can start them business.
Because like I say, they sit behind that man if the one they talk.
Why they put her ass up?
We need to get the police to put her out. But still, I still say, "Who the fuck am I calling man, just because of this?" But I'm a dog, and I'm not more quiet. I understand that the next me, for that.
You know what I told him? He asked me, I said, "There's no wine in the politics."
Hey, guess what, I'm gonna build, and send it forty-eight years. Hello, America. It's pretty like I'm in Chicago, where everybody, they never stop me. They gonna vote for me, that's what...
Oh, they think I...
He lying, man, I'm about to sit him, I'm like, "What are you doing today?"
I have, um...
I'm about to go ask him.
So we gonna start our consorted effort this weekend, or maybe even forty. This is the passion that we want to get the cops here to get the signatures to get, so we can get Adele up out here, we want to get a hundred of these made to our... She need to go, people calling from all over, they ready to sign it, get her out. Denise, Denise, you best sit down. Denise, you best sit down. Denise, you best sit down. About to start, uh, the... We gotta, we gotta put the camera on Denise to protect her, because they gonna send her to jail, bro.
Who over there dealing with, who over there dealing with the ops? I'm gonna go up to like, "Yeah, bitch, that's why my sister don't..." You know, I'm finna, I'm going to the show Monday. No, I'm going to the show in the morning, say, "Bitch, and my sister don't like you." They ain't finna get shit tonight, in the morning, you good tonight? Them mother sister said, "You ain't shit dick." I ain't gonna swear, bro, I wouldn't do that.
Turn your phone off, you gonna go to jail. Turn your phone off before you go to jail. Turn your phone off if you go to jail.
It's worth it.
There are six members present. I would ask for a motion on coming...
Let me know how much money they spend if we don't have it.
They send everything to council, it's over.
It's over?
I would, I would hate to separate something, but everything else they be sending.
Can you speak up?
We can't hear you.
Resolution two point zero, month two zero, contract for us to be on management of our fund. Resolution, uh, two four zero, month two four three, allocation of our fund for youth job training, the city in twenty twenty six summer, youth job training program. Resolution two four zero, month twenty one, say, they come. Resolution two four zero, one four zero, our contingency funds, our ventures for Flint downtown, resolution four eighty eight. Resolution, uh, our resolution, our, our... Resolution two four zero, one four one, the reallocation of our fund for breakfast, our, have a test network for youth job training.
There are any other separations? There are any other separations? There is none? The consent agenda consists of the following. Two four zero, eight, train. Two four zero, one two nine. Two four zero, one three zero. Two four zero, one three one. Two four zero, one three two. Two four zero, one three three. Two four zero, one three four. Two four zero, one three five. Two four zero, one three six. Two four zero, one three seven. Two four zero, one three eight. Two four zero, one three nine. Two four zero, one four two. Two four zero, one four three. Roll call master.
They said, "Everything, they ain't got no money, they can't have that much of that."
How do we afford this?
I don't know, uh...
Our money?
Yeah, they put the our money in the general fund.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Did you have?
Yes.
Firebird's answer? Worthy?
Yes.
Yes.
Useless.
The vote is six yes, zero no. And those resolutions will be sent to council. The first separation is two four zero zero eight nine, please. There's motions. Yeah, there's a motion on the floor, is there support? Support. And it's been moved by Ms. Shep to, to send, um, two four zero zero eight nine, reallocation of office funds for bi-class versions. The emerging developer programs.
Um, I'll, can, Emily, can you come and speak on this? I think we come, uh, before. You gotta move that to finance.
Good evening, council. The executive director of Lisk wants to know if we're here last time, um, just the last time, it's been a minute. Spent a bit of time, saw a ton of value, if you have any questions.
Yeah, could you, again, Mr.?
Oh, okay, just, just over me, got it, I didn't know what you, if you asked us the questions, got it. So what this is, um, one of the things that we hear often in Flint is that we need more Flint residents who are able to, um, build the process of being able to acquire property and acquire a loan and then build a house for a duplex or an apartment building, as well as acquire an existing property, uh, structure, and then be able to acquire a loan to renovate it and, uh, be able to have that be, um, rented out, uh, for the employees. So one of the, and that's, you know, being a developer. That is something that we've heard, we have a similar, um, uh, reference that this is something that they talk about in cities all over the state, all over the country, that we want more residents to learn how to do this process. We don't want it to be the same four nonprofits or the same one developer who's getting the loan and everything. And so how you do that, we have to train it, we train more people to do it. And so this is step one to establish a training. Uh, this would be for fifteen participants, uh, it would be on, uh, curriculum modules, as well as monthly face-to-face, uh, trainings, uh, that will be one-on-one with the each of the fifteen developers. It's a mountain for construction contractors who are just doing the building, it's actually for people who want to acquire and actually run the development. Um, and it should be a combination of the training curriculum, working them through the development process, as well as getting them prepared for submitting loan applications, because that is one of the things, is accessing capital, being able to, uh, get the, um, different loans, be able to do the construction, not do the renovation. Also, this is a predeveloping grant, what does that look like? The predeveloping grants, it's a combination of early-stage investments, uh, so whether it's like the planning type of market studies, so you know what the demand is for, um, some of the design work through architecture, um, environmental reports, um, having to look at the soil, look at other factors, asbestos, it's from existing building, um, structural assessments, so that way they know if part of the building needs to be, will have more, uh, renovation perhaps than other parts. So all of these, um, uh, tools that they will give these fifteen participants, who all have to be either Flint residents or, um, they do live outside the city, um, they own, um, have property in the, uh, in the city limits that they want to redevelop, um, either way, it would actually build a pipeline of small-scale developers, um, and by doing this, you will get to see a lot more housing development and a lot more, um, generation of actual keeping, uh, keeping the wealth here in the city.
So, a lot of the time when, um, developers are applying for grants and funds, they got, they have to have like three-year experience and, um, experience dealing with federal dollars, so that would have come in the elderly. I would like to see this try to get to somewhere and they go apply for a grant and they don't meet the criteria because they don't have the experience of developing, and that's where a lot of red tape coming in at because they don't have the fiduciary experience or the development experience. You sum up and say you gotta have five years, someone say you gotta have three years of development experience. So, would this allow them the opportunity to, uh, even when they apply for community government block grant dollars, they can't apply for community government block grant dollars to develop on a smaller scale because they don't have the experience? So, we're taking them through this training, then they're finishing, get their certification or, or certificate, or you ask, you want to do this training, and then apply for community government block grant dollars just to get their offer.
C D G funds are for nonprofits, not for nonprofits, so this is, this is to create more, more private developers. I want to say that, because we want this, because we want people who are looking to treat this like a business, and they are out there doing this and have access to capital through Lisk, would be the partner that does this, would do the lending, so, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm not hearing.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you, um, Emily, so is the city, they participated in a program like this before, correct?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I don't believe that the city of Flint has had this, uh, kind of, we're doing a meeting before. Um, we have this created on our own, um, but we will actually be a part of creating this curriculum.
Okay, and, and so basically this is a program that's training upcoming business owners?
Upcoming, we have developers, people who want to be developing, correct?
People who want to develop, um, land in Flint?
Yes.
Oh, specifically, okay, you're exactly right. Thank you, Brad.
Any other discussion in the first round? Any discussion in the second round?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, Emily, would there be, uh, do you know, uh, funding that's available for, for proper developers to tap into, just in case they want to, um, you know, apply for some small business loans to develop a small-scale house or, you know?
Absolutely, so Lisk, the local initiative support corporation is a C D F I, they have those, those, uh, capital opportunities. So if you as, right now, if you are somebody who's sitting there listening to this meeting and you are, you know, and building a duplex, you could do a list right now, now, um, and then apply for a loan. They have many different types of loans that you can get. Um, what this program is going to do is going to help teach people who are wanting to do that, which you don't necessarily have a hold of the process, or if you have an idea of the process, you haven't actually ran through it before, and then you will be able to then apply for one of those loans through Lisk, and they would actually have gotten you ready over the course of the training. So, hopefully, I'm being clear, that you could apply now, but if you feel like you aren't ready to apply and you want a training, this is the type of, this emerging development training for those people who, who want to do that.
So, is this for new developers or assisting businesses that want to add more, more to develop? Can, assisting buildings, businesses that's out there, want to enhance their business?
Absolutely, I think that when the word emerging, what does that mean? It means that you're not someone who has already acquired, uh, multiple bank loans for multiple construction projects before. You're not someone who has got C D G funds to grant finance your nonprofit development that you've done, um, so, so a, um, um, an entity that if you are a business owner and you own a business and you want to then start developing some of the land perhaps around your business, but you don't really know how to do that per se, you know how to run your grocery store, or you know how to run your dry cleaning, but you didn't know maybe you want to try to develop a land around you, you absolutely could find it.
What, what, what I'm, uh, what my head is, uh, I'm thinking about the North Saginaw Street corridor along, and the Lewis Street Franklin area corridor, there are some mom and pop stores, there's some mom and pop businesses, um, along Saginaw, uh, Lewis Franklin that is looking to, for financing or to enhance their business. I know one is a barbershop on the corner of Fish. It's a Black Street and Saginaw, you know, um, so I want them to be able to, um, tap into these opportunities. So, how, how much room is it on their next base for this training?
So, the first cohort, cohort is what we're calling the first year, will be fifteen participants. Um, it was my hope that this is something that we are able to do on every year on an annual basis. Uh, similar programs, uh, that are running in other parts of the country, that I'll just point to Detroit. You've got two of them, uh, that are being ran, Building Community Value and the, uh, Eco Development Initiative. They have, they each started with, um, uh, one cohort a year. Now both of them are running three cohorts, cohorts a year because there was so much interest, and so they were able to show that and get more funding. So I would love to turn this into something that...
How will you market this, if a problem?
Uh, we would do, in many ways, um, I think we would use social media, I think we would announce it at town hall meetings, we would announce, we would love for all of the nine of you to help us, um, with your constituents, um, so, in many ways, I guess, um, I, I don't have a marketing plan, but I'd...
How long, how long is the training?
Uh, it'd be a year long, the first one we would do, uh, we would run all the...
What's the, you know, how long is the day?
Uh, so there is online modules, so it would be, the participants would do online, and then the monthly meetings...
Call facilitator?
Lisk, Lisk is our partner for this training, yes. And then the, the monthly meetings would actually be held, uh, where the developers are, the neighborhood they want to develop in, uh, the, um, uh, facilitator would actually be with them in their neighborhood to be able to actually, in real-time, be talking and working with them.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? There are none? Um, Ellen Baker, say aye. Aye? Opposed?
Point of order.
What's the aye?
Uh, I'll prefer a roll call.
Okay. We have an objection, there is, it is allowing us to do a, a voice vote, um, by ice and ace in our council rules. I want to call it to the attention of our council members. Roll call, go please, to send two four zero zero eight nine to council.
And Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Chad?
Yes.
Is Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Aloney?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no. That will be sent to council. The next separated resolution is two four zero zero one five.
Yes, I would like to move two four zero one one five to a special affair.
There's a motion on the floor to send two four zero zero one five to special affairs. Is there support?
I support it.
It's been properly supported by Mr. Aloney to send, um, two four zero zero one five to special affairs. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, is there someone, um, from administration, Clyde, um, or, um, Clyde? This is a consent to enter stipulation in order for the sun pastors with social action, several Russian city in Flint. This, um, resolution, I believe, is our last, not, not this one today. But, um, going to dissent agreement. From when we talked about the last litigation that they brought before the city of Flint. We requested, um, and, and, I mean, we had to talk about the service lines needing to, um, the mama service lines need to be replaced, but then we got two different conflicting numbers. When we was in executive session, we heard one number, then someone else came out here this morning and talked about different numbers, and this is also dealing with the restoration, uh, the, um, yards, sidewalks, driveways, curb. It, that's what this is referring to, correct?
I would have to refer to the legal department, this is fully, um, this particular resolution is, uh, centered around the legal implications between the city and the actual lawsuit that was filed against the city. So I will refer, this particular document is, uh, in reference to the lawsuit itself, the technical legal aspects of the lawsuit. So I will refer to the legal department.
So you took the law department, I mean, this is the legal department, um, to our city, it's, yeah. Is this lawsuit dealing with the restoration and, um, service line, basically?
That's correct, this resolution deals specifically with the concerned pastors' litigation as it relates to restoration. It would actually be the law department to request, there's a lot of moving pieces with this issue, so we'd actually request that it be kept in the current finance committee at this moment.
Okay, I would like to do a substitute motion to keep this in finance.
There's a motion on the floor to keep resolution two four zero zero one five in finance, is there support?
Supporting.
It's been moved in properly second by Mr. Aloney, just keep it in finance, um, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, as you know, some of us, I'm not sure how many, but some of us have, um, conflict in what we heard. When we was in executive session, we heard one number, and a young man came and spoke on some numbers, and when he was speaking on numbers, we was just kind of like, hold on, something in the middle can't clean. We also request for a copy of, an estimated copy of the wind funds was left to pay for some of this, and I know we just kind of talked about this, so beat that dead horse, but I think it's important that we understand where we at in our lives. We, we do know, we, we facing some financial issues and a lot of towards becoming, but I feel it's just some information that we would like. If we can get that, that will help some of us make a decision on this one here. I'm just not comfortable because I have not looked at some numbers, I would like to look at the numbers on the wind funds to see where we at on that. And I know my, uh, colleague that is not here to fight for, asking to request this too. So, if you could put something together that would help us, and I know we talked about it before, we, we just decided, and then the, the restoration, if we we got, we getting too conflicted with the numbers, that a man has spoke, this he gave us fifty numbers and we were like, back there. So we just need to be clear how many restorationists that's unfinished, how many service lines need to be completed. If we can get that information by the next finance committee meeting. And then the young man out of Iowa knows that, and one of my colleagues know the who? The, the young man who came and spoke and gave us some numbers, what's, what's his name? Jeff Martin, he's from, uh, Rock Engineering. If, if we can bring him back, that will help us because he came and was some numbers that was fifty, or, uh, thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Second round? Okay, this, oh, that's right, it's only one round. Um, this is a motion to keep resolution, the vote, keep resolution two four zero one one five in finance.
Ms. Bruce Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Chad?
Yes.
Ms. Newland?
Yes.
Mr. Aloney?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no, that will stay in finance.
The next resolution is two four zero one two zero, I am here to take a motion to send this discussion... I am here to take a motion to send this to special affairs.
I have the main motion to send this to special affairs.
Enter motion and, and it's been properly seconded by Ms. Worthing, send two four zero one two zero. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Is there a possible that we can have, I think, I don't know if they came to the-
I agree, I spoke, I spoke with them yesterday.
Really? And they will have been-
They will be here and we will have, they will do, we will do a special order for them on Monday. And this, he has to fly out to go house state on Monday. He will be here for a special affairs.
Here we gonna give first thing, uh, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand twenty-five dollars not to exceed. So even though they may not use it, not to exceed. And based on what we have already paid them and the amount of times they have showed up at city council or they've advised us or even reached out to it. I'm just not happy with their service. Hopefully, um, they good at making sure that we ain't misusing the offer funds. And that's mainly what they're here for, so that they oversee, to make sure that the administration or council are going for offer funding for people that's not even eligible. But I'm just not pleased with their services. I'm not pleased with how the lack of them coming to council. The lack of what I thought that they was going to be advocating for us to get additional dollars into the city and kind of what they said that's what, what they, that's what. But I thought when we agreed with them originally, that's what one of their agreements was. They were all trying to look for outside funding for us. And to this date,
That's what they said.
I don't know a dollar that they have been advocating for on behalf of the city. And I wish I could find that video of when we originally voted for them, which was a very controversial vote and that issue with them, the amount of money that was there. But they signed the deal with the voting. And that's not it. And as much as we done gave, we probably done sent them about three or four times. And I, and if they have been here, I paid them. They not, they don't even come out and be like, hey, councilman, um, you got any questions about the offer application and the process? I mean, I just, I'm not pleased. But hopefully they doing a good job because I don't see it today.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? I'll take a few minutes to say that, um, in response to Mr. Murphy's questions, um, their role has changed different than what it was when we did the RFP. So they're not doing as much of the hand plan that was developed by the mayor and then changed by council is different than what was imagined when they did their RFP and when it was submitted. So that's why we're not seeing them all the time, but they are behind the scenes and they meet with the mayor once a week. And I have talked to them frequently. So, um, especially in regards to some requests for offer funding that have not gone to council have a resolution. So, um, that's what they've been doing. Anyways, that's the end of that discussion. Now, this is the vote to send resolution two four zero one two zero to special affairs.
Ms. Shad?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Brissette?
Yes. Vote is six yes, zero no. That will be sent to special affairs. The next resolution is two four zero one two four. Now, when I change the motion.
Yes, I would like to, um, move resolution two four zero one two four to council.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Dr. Lewis. Send to council, go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, to Alomny. This, uh, trying for the city of Flint, claiming to say some of you. Hold on, hold on.
Yes.
That's one more. Could you explain what this one just is?
Uh, the mayor would like to see five to seven organizations. Uh, the preference will be given to those that did apply for the job training category. Uh, ten children, ten kids each, um, uh, that would be employed by each of them. He did have the idea that in the choice of who those agencies are could be an ad hoc committee of council. I talked to him today and he mentioned that, uh, which orgi- organizations would be chosen. Um, and then there are still lots of job training, article funds that could go to other entities. But this one is one that, um, um, he wants to try to get started in the next month. Um, so that is the, um, the timing of this. Whereas the remaining resolutions, um, could happen, um, at some of the meetings, let's say, and maybe for one after.
So was this, um, application part of the application process?
No, this was not.
It was not, oh. So, because I know my colleagues, um, always emphasize that we need to follow the application process. Sometimes I get emails from other folks that has been following or monitoring the process of the offer application process to make sure that applications have applied for article dollars are there first. Here we have, uh, um, application for the food market that had a glitch in the process whether the compliance department received it or not. And I want to separate this because I want to make it clear.
I spoke to one of these questions I had yesterday with Mr. Jarzinski was about their application for food. And they called and contacted them three times to tell them-
So my point is, rather than giving an application, rather than was incomplete or completed, they did give us a completed application. They, I shared it with my colleagues. Here we getting ready to vote on two hundred thousand dollars for someone who didn't put in the application. But we getting ready to vote on it. And whether I'm for the food market or not, what I want to show is the comparison of how we picking and choosing what's important to us. This is important because they need to apply for an application. The food market thought they applied for the application. Thought that maybe someone contacted them three times or whatever. Whether they did or didn't, okay, if you didn't contact them, they didn't know. Now, both sides are aware that either they wasn't contacted or the application wasn't in. But here we are, we getting ready to vote on giving somebody two hundred thousand dollars that didn't even apply for through that process. And we gonna give them two hundred thousand. But we gonna come up with all these excuses why we shouldn't give the food market that's almost ninety-seven percent there to being able to open. Not sure what went on, why it's taking so long, why, and I, some people don't agree with that. But I just don't think this is fair. Because we had to find this funding from somewhere, the two hundred thousand dollars. Out of ninety-four million dollars that came into the city of Flint, you mean to tell me we can't find three hundred thousand dollars for a food market on the north side of Flint? Something is wrong with this picture.
But then-
What I'm asking you to do, if you guys just, um, find some funding, I'm just not comfortable. I nev- I'm not a member of the food market, but I do not. I cannot sit here and look conscious and watch us give all this money out and then see this food market trying to open and we just don't look at it because they didn't ask to file for that application.
Now, I would never vote for the food market. I had made that quite clear before. They had given millions and millions of dollars and thinking it open by now, there is something seriously wrong with whoever is operating that nonprofit. Um, but regardless, um, this two hundred thousand, we allocated forty million to revenue replacement. Was that part of our plan? Um, the ARCA committee? The revenue replacement? Because I'm looking at the resolution now, if it's different from the one from before, did this change at all?
There's, there, um, thirteen billion in unallocated revenue replacement in specific areas. So we have overall forty million, but some of that has been allocated to specific projects.
So to be at the cover of the original, it says-
Thirteen million one hundred forty-two one eighty-eight that is-
That is left.
That is not allocated. Uh, in, in the plan, there is thirteen million dollars for revenue replacement that the city could use to offset losses that it sustained during COVID.
This says forty million. Um, the resolution two four zero one two four? The reference to that is what happened back in December.
Oh, oh, yeah. That, no, that's not, okay, yeah, yeah.
But there is two point five million for job, new job training.
In a, in one of the categories was new job, job training.
Yeah, new job training does have two point five million, uh, as a category. It, it was slated all two point five for community grants and there were thirty-eight applicants. Um, so just, just speaking facts that did happen. Um, and this is, uh, the, uh, request of the mayor to have two hundred thousand of that two point five um, be used for new job training. Um, but it would be one that would be driven, um, by the administration instead of, uh, by, um, one of the applicants that came then applied. So just, you know, to be transparent.
Because are these nonprofit businesses or for profit?
The five to seven, uh, entities that this resolution is requesting to work with would be nonprofits that would be, um, that would apply to be a part of this two hundred thousand dollar program. And then again, the remaining two point three million is still out there for other resolutions to recommend out, uh, your-
So they, they really couldn't apply for something that wasn't really a category at the time?
There were thirty-eight applications for youth job training, uh, that were submitted last March. And I imagine that some of those thirty-eight would definitely be ones who would be applying for this two hundred thousand. Um, so they might, it might, it might feel a little redundant. Again, the, the, the driver behind this is coming out of the administration versus those, all those other applications are all from the agencies themselves. So it's-
Do you have an example of maybe some of the nonprofits that we're thinking that we might involve?
So we have not chosen them yet and, um, it would be, uh, a process to have, to put out, uh, a request for them to say that they're interested and then, um, that would be something, and again, this is one I talked to the mayor today. His idea was that actually they, they would help be chosen by this body, um, using an ad hoc committee that would, could help choose that. So.
Well, as long as the ARCA committee is okay with this allocation, um, I'm also okay with that because it's going to come out of the two point five million. And, um, I think it's a great program. And I hope we can continue to do this. I wish my kid was old enough to do this, he's not fifteen yet. But, um, anytime you can get them working instead of with, it, it says exactly what I was thinking. My child has ADHD. If he's not busy, he will find something not constructive to do. So you've got to keep those who need to be involved busy in this. I think it would be a great program.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
So I, I do want to say, um, when we talk about this resolution, I want to be clear because we will keep assigning it to, um, the mayor, right? These are jobs for youth. So one of the things that this is wanting to help address, a couple of the things that this is going to help address over the summer is one, it's going to help families with poverty, at least for the summer, right? They'll, they'll have an opportunity to, um, be able to do what they need to do financially, right, with this. Uh, the second thing is it'll help keep youth out of trouble, which is one of the biggest things we need to look at. I believe someone stood up here earlier and already said that they're, um, now it's getting warned that people are shooting activities that are not legal. And so this helps us to keep our youth away from illegal activities, helps give them something to do. Helps expose them to positive career pathways that they might not have considered themselves or solve besides those roles. So we're now giving them, we're shaking their idea of how they see themselves when we do programs like this. Uh, and then, um, finally, I, I think it's a way to show that we have standard game when it comes to our youth in this city. That we are willing to support them and do what needs to be done to help them identify themselves and help them self-worth. And so I am in support of this, I think, a lot of times. And then the fact that there's going to be diversity issues that they can work in, right? A lot of times, youth are relegated to only cleaning up or something of that nature, right? And so now we're giving them opportunities to do other things. And, and that nice enough is that it's all you have for me to do all summer is clean, right? Is clean outside and especially when I don't see the adults cleaning with me, right? And so now that you're giving them opportunity to do something other than clean, you're, you're giving them an opportunity to, and like you said, you all are still looking at multiple ventures, but you're, you're giving them something that expands their mind. And so I think that this will be good for the youth of Flint. Because like this says, this is a youth job training. And I want us to stay focused on that and make sure that we are not, um, punishing youth for a complex or difficult situation, right? So thank you so much for being here, hiding, um, helping to explain this.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Well, thank you. Um, I think it, I think it is a great idea. Once again, um, we are providing jobs for, um, the young people for the summer. And I received an email and it was from you and they were employing us to push forward with the resolution. It was saying how much that this will mean because they are looking for summer employment. And through the announcements, they see that the mayor's program was a vehicle to summer employment. And so they were wanting the council to push that. I was looking for it so I could read it and unfortunately I couldn't find it. But we must keep those things in mind, you know, that's very important. So, um, just like the council and several were saying, we must remain a little focused at the task at hand. You know, we're talking about these jobs, let's talk about it specifically and exclusively youth jobs. And, um, I know this, this speaking on my behalf, we need to see, it's supposed to be one of those organizations because I could use some youth help for the summer. You know, and yeah, I trust a lot of what they, yeah, we can use that right here, um, with that city hall. We need to grow the next council people, the next clerk, the next, uh, private district. We need to grow the people so they can take our spots. I'm not looking to be here forever. And none of us, we, none of us, we're not going to be here forever. So I think this would be a great way to train the youth, a great way to open up their knowledge to the inner work of the government and to explore people in their own, um, government and see the positive side, see the side where they can come and they can impact change. So I would support this, uh, one hundred percent because again, it is providing an opportunity of- And see the positive side, see the side where they can come and they can impact change. So I would support this, uh, one hundred percent because again, uh, it is providing an opportunity, um, for youth. As well as, uh, for other organizations that may not have been recommended for funding, so, uh, to utilize some funding for youth so that they, they can explore the possibility of putting this city up. I'll thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair.
Uh, five to seven is of this, uh, this rap, um, when this, this, this resolution was being consolidated.
What's that? Um, anyone else? I think that's just leaves me. You know, I was against this because they hadn't replied and I had several calls and, um, was convinced to support this. Um, it is important. I, you know, I had to heart back to my nephew and how lost he was in the summer with not much kids to play video games and run streets and get into trouble. So, um, time to go ahead and support this. Is there any discussion in the second round?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So I'm not against, and so my colleagues, I'm not against this program with youth. I'm looking against the process and how it's going versus someone that's been coming down here to leave, actually leaving that for years, talking about food in my community. And now I'm going back to there again. Out of ninety-four million dollars, I don't care if they receive other funding because what I know is y'all is talking about. And maybe I'm wrong. Y'all talk about leveraging. Y'all always talk about leveraging. So if the food market went and leveraged dollars elsewhere to support them opening, that's what leveraging looks like. So to say they got, um, however much money that they received, and we can't give them three hundred thousand out of ninety-four million dollars, um, empty. Is there any way, cause you just said y'all have some unspent dollars, is there any way you can bring a resolution to council or talk to the administration about bringing a resolution contingency upon them opening? Because one of the issues with the food market is y'all received all this money, which if they did. I, you know, I just don't know why. I know a little of the logistics. I know I have some of the funding they were getting from. But for us to get thirty, ninety-four million dollars into the city of Flint and then giving them no ARCA dollars. Cause there are other people that have not, you know, because one of the things I heard was that they got community brother blocking their dollars.
Two hundred fifty thousand.
Two hundred twenty-six thousand, which is still reimbursed. So it ain't like when y'all gave them two hundred and fifty thousand of community brother blocking their dollars. Y'all gave them upfront money. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars still need, they had to raise some money and get reimbursed for that. So I wanna be clear on that. Um, is there any way that you guys can look for, cause I'm not against this, cause I, I thought about my community, some of you, we redundant when it comes down to youth. And us employing youth, they got, um, youth quest. I think the Flint School District got a, um, thing where if the kids in the school, you can go to your counselor and tell them you wanna sign up for the summer youth initiative to go work in the summer. For whatever organization or nonprofit out there that's doing great work in the community. So us giving two hundred thousand dollars to the city of Flint and go, um, not give, uh, poor families, uh, kids opportunities. Because there are a lot of opportunities out there and I can bet your life on it that there are, um, organizations out there that has youth, summer youth programs. You cannot tell me there's not no summer youth programs out there that's helping kids. I don't believe it. So my thing is I'm not against this and I will support it. I am against the application process that y'all said that, that they didn't put an application in versus these people putting an application in versus somebody had a glitch, they got too far. Cause it just seemed like we doing whatever we can not to support this food market. So that's what I am trying to prove my point with this resolution, that if we go support this resolution for two hundred thousand dollars. We should be able to support a resolution for three hundred thousand dollars for an organization that had a glitch, that didn't answer the phone three times from the ARCA, um, committee or whatever. Even when they found out we had some issue with it, look how much money we done paid. They should have reached out to them and or told us they can't reach you and we could have made that meeting happen so they can look at that application. So I'm just worried about the process. That's all. Oh, and then the three hundred thousand, if y'all could say contingency on y'all opening?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round? Saying none, this is the vote to send, um, two four zero one two four to council.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Chrisley?
Yes.
Ms. DeShaw?
Yes.
Ms. Six, yes, zero, no?
That would be sent to council. The next separated resolution is two four zero one four zero. One four zero. It's on page six. All right, I understand the motion.
I would like to move the resolution two four zero one four zero, ARCA contingency fund in honor, interest for the Flint downtime, we done authority DDA revenue replacement fund for parking revenue loss during COVID nineteen pandemic. To special affairs.
There's a motion on the floor to send the resolution two four zero one four zero to special affairs. Is there support? Is there support? That res- that motion, guys?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I would like to move the resolution two four zero one four zero to council.
There's a motion on the floor to send two four zero, two four zero one four zero to council. Is there support? Who was that? Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Listen, DDA been a whole, um, mess up, jacked up from the leaders almost to everything going on with the DDA. I don't support the DDA far as what's going on down there with the parking meters not messing up, the city people, all these stimulus tickets and all of that different kind of stuff. Already said a long time ago that we need to take the bulldozer and bulldoze all those meters because based on they in a contract and that's our contract agreement. We'll void the contract out because they gave us some faulty meters that don't work, that don't take people money, don't take, it's all jacked up. So how do we all stay in agreement in a contract with somebody and then turn around and we gotta say no. H E L L stick, no. Um. Listen, y'all came down here and complaining about DDA. We don't, I don't know who the director is and I'm just the person left. It's, it's all jacked up down there. I'm just not comfortable. Y'all, they built a parking rack down there, not knowing who was gonna pay for it and they probably ain't DDA, um, payment obligation. So y'all gonna put us on it. Now you wanna take some ARCA dollars for how much? Five hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and ninety-six thousand? Um, it won't be bought by my vote. So y'all do what y'all wanna do. I ain't supporting it.
Um, so I wanna bring some light, some clarity to this. Um, for one, um, this, these funds are coming out of revenue replacement. COVID dollars were put in place to replace revenue loss during COVID and because a lot of us who were staying home and staying safe. And when the pandemic is still real and still ongoing, um, that's exactly how they lost a lot of revenue. That's for one. And so that's something outside their control. Number two, this, um, this money is also to help for them to nullify that contract. So they can get rid of those meters and so they can move forward, um, and get out of that contract so they can, um, alleviate the problem that council and Murphy were so fast in discussing. Um, so that's why, um, I'm pending this resolution there asking, um, for the five hundred and sixty thousand. This is not coming out of community grants. This is coming out of the specific category where this money is supposed to come from. It's coming out of revenue replacement. They are replacing the revenue that they have lost and that they will lose when they go and, um, void the contract. So residents will not have to incur those, um, fees. Moreover, this will also, um, help them as they envision and go about their new plan. Where they're gonna remove all of the meters around city hall. So residents won't have to worry about parking when they come down to city hall to handle their business. So, um, I trust that my colleagues will see the progression, get out of the motion and see how this field will consider this one forward and also, um, get, be used for a specific purpose. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? I'm gonna take my time. The DDA is actually part of Flint, is audit, is actually a part of our audit. We can't complete our audit without theirs. And so this is a valid qualified use of the funds. We're not using, we're actually using part of the interest that has been earned to fund this program. So it's not taken away from the city. But it's something that the DDA was, um, I believe approved by the voters to have that. It must be voted on by, by the residents and without this money, they will fail. And it is by the rules. So I am going to vote, um, in favor. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So what happened to the tickets that they done sent or hundreds of, um, residents for a meter that the meter, if the meter don't work, the, um, the camera show work to take pictures of people like somebody to send them a ticket? What happened to, to that? Do this wipe off all everybody's ticket?
Do we get their money?
Do this ARCA dollars wipe off everybody's ticket that not a ticket since the raggedy meters? Can somebody answer that? Can you answer that, um, to, to, um, President Dr. Lewis? Can you answer that? Is the tickets that are the residents or, um, whoever, I don't know, um, cause you just explained what it's for. So that's good that it's, um. Replacing those raggedy meters. And you, you talk about me being emotional. Do you know how emotional the residents been coming down here to city council? And those that didn't even come to city council who they done, um, don't even wanna come downtown and park because they don't wanna deal with the meters? So I'm emotional because I feel them. So if it come across that I'm emotional, H E L L, I am. Because not only have they done it to me, if they do it to me and I'm a consequence, it just matters to how many other people. Sometimes we have to get up out of self and even though you think we may be emotional, we ain't just emotional, we emotional because we feel residents that done came to this, um, council podium meeting after meeting after meeting. What they done is us themselves. They don't even come no more about it because they done came on several occasions and told us about how bad, even my Aunt N's Brown was here. And she sat on the board. What did they do? Nothing. Can, will this clear up people's tickets? Cause I ain't had, I wanna, I ain't going to lie.
Thank you, Councilor. Um, um, so I will tell you this, that the DDA's agreements with municipal parking services is the contract, both will terminate on Ju- June twentieth of this year. Uh, and their, the DDA board has already said that they, um, are, are absolutely not renewing these contracts and want to proceed with getting a new parking meter situation on the board. I don't know more than that. Um, they, I don't know if they think they've put it out to DDA, but it does expire on June twenty. In the meantime, um, the reason why this resolution was put in front of you is, um, this entity is the one that shovels the snow within the area downtown. This is the entity that is, um, uh, doing all of the maintenance for any of the downtown events, like to prep for if there's like back to the bricks and there's trash, they are picking that up. So there are basic services that this entity provides and if, uh, if, if, um, if they do not have, um, the revenue replacement that is tied to this resolution from the loss that they experienced from not having parking revenue during twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Um, those costs will, if they are going to, um, going to have the, um, the services beginning, they will be passed on to the city. So it will come out of the city anyway. It is component.
My question again, I don't know if you heard me clearly, and I appreciate you breaking all of that down. All of that is great and moved up and going downtown. Will it clear out residents' tickets by us having these faulty, no good parking meters?
I don't have that answer. I'm sorry.
Can you get that by money? I'll move this to council. I'll vote to move this to council, but on money, um. I, I just think it's not fair to charge residents. All these tickets that you get when you go and put some money in and then spit it back out and you want me to go around here to the, um, DDA? No, I ain't doing that. I already, I'm on mission when I come down to city council or city hall or wherever I'm going. I don't wanna have to go around and talk to my body. I'm already pissed off because it done pissed, um, spit my money back out. Then I gotta turn around and get a ticket in the mail. And it was like the revenue replacement came from you, charging people on their tickets. So I see what you got. I ain't get it. We can't get it from y'all, but we'll get it from giving y'all tickets. It ain't gonna tell how many people paid, but I ain't paying. Don't pay it on me. But if you can get that answer for me by money, that'd be fine. That'd be good.
Uh, there is a letter that was submitted by the DDA attorney that I'm gonna share with all of you. So if there's a question, you can actually ask it directly.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So according to the F D A director, um, they have been taking, working with residents to take their tickets. And so they're working with all residents to come down there and bring it to their attention. So I don't wanna demonize and vilify the DDA in terms of them working with us. And with the, um, DDA director or the other F D A director, Pierre, maybe she was here, she explicitly said at the letter that residents can come down there and she will work with them and in terms of their tickets. So I, I don't wanna demonize them. I don't wanna vilify them. They have a policy that says that they can come down there and if you have received a ticket, come down there and they will, um, assist you and sell you that ticket. That's what they said. So with that being said, I wanna use these funds for exactly what they were allocated for, COVID contingency, revenue replacement. Just like Councilman Chris said, the Flint, that's what called the Flint DDA, is, is a part of the city. And so we need these funds to keep our DDA going in addition to put them on the correct path. We had several, uh, before we got them forward, they entered some bad contracts. They're cleaning that up. So when you keep beating the dead horse, they admitted the horse is dead. They're trying to move forward with a new horse. I'm not gonna hold them back. I'm not gonna hold them back because of what happened in the past. This is called correction. This is called moving forward. So with that being said, I just wanna reiterate that the DDA is working with all residents that may have received parking tickets. So with that being said, once again, I'm gonna support the DDA for the loss of revenue and with the moving forward with the new contracts and also with the fact that they are working with all residents to alleviate tickets. So those that intend to pay, don't intend to pay, we encourage you to go down to the DDA to clear. we encourage you to go down to the DDA to clear that slate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, the vote sent Resolution two four zero one four zero two.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
The vote is for yes to no. That motion fails.
Madam Chair. Is it possible to send?
That motion was made earlier and it failed.
Okay.
We can reconsider that motion.
Okay, so I would like to send Resolution two four zero one four zero to special affairs.
That motion was already made and failed and it lacked the support. So how can we turn around and brag about the same motion? And then if we in an agenda item and we move on the motion? And we completed the motion, don't we move on to the agenda? Can we just grind it back up as a? Because I know that once a motion is made.
I would like to refer to the city for the next.
About panel, Jack. Come over here.
That a little bit of motion didn't have any support, so it didn't fail.
That's a good thing.
Oh, it must have had a second.
Right, sorry. It didn't fail. But you have been flexible in this area. So yeah, just wanted to point out the motion didn't fail.
So it's at the chair's leisure.
If we can get support for that motion, we can get support. And of course, if the initial motion did not get support, it was a little. Go ahead, that motion made a motion to set special affairs. Is there support? Department of the Second, it's sent to special affairs. Who supported that? Not this, Ms. Shat. Any discussion?
Yes. I would not be supporting this move, getting moved to special affairs because I just tried to move this motion to special affairs. And I didn't get the support of my colleagues. I guess they was kind of remote and because they didn't get the following votes, they thought that's a little bit. They got that motion.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair. So thank you. So through you, to my, no, never mind. I don't want to kick this can down the road. There's no need to kick a can down the road. And all questions happened explicitly answered about why this resolution is here, the dollar amount, where it's going to. We talked about the termination of the contracts. We spoke about replacing the revenue from the, from Covid. And then we also spoke about the DDA working with residents regarding these tickets. Working with the residents, whether that include, you know, eradicating the tickets. This is what they said that they are doing. So I'm a little concerned about that. And, you know, we can talk about bringing it up at a later date. But when bills are due immediately, you don't have a later date. And so I'm a little concerned while we're kicking the can down the road because the funds are needed now. And so I just don't understand why we're going to wait just to approve these funds when we already, when I discussed and we already had a discussion on the questions that were at hand. So I would like to ask my colleagues, you know, is there anything else that they need? If they want to bring it up at a later date, if there's something like that we're missing in terms of working with the DDA? Because again, these are revenue replacement dollars. These dollars are replacing revenue. Revenue replacement dollars. These dollars are replacing revenue. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? No, you already spoke, I think.
No, I didn't. It was okay.
Okay. Yeah, you did. You started the conversation.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we did. Any other discussion? Seeing none. This is the vote sent.
Yes.
No.
Please, yes. Ms. Shat?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Allen?
No. Now I feel.
That motion fails.
Right. I'd like to make a motion to move this in finesse.
There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Shat.
I want to know who to ask from DDA.
Resolution two four zero one four zero in finesse. Is there support?
Support.
Department of the Second, is there any discussion?
It'll go to the vote.
Discussion. This is the vote. Resolution two four zero one four zero in finesse.
Yes.
Please, yes. Ms. Shat?
Did I say it should be? What belongs in here?
Yes.
Six, yes, zero. The vote is six, yes, zero, no. That motion, that resolution will stay in finesse. The next resolution is two four zero one four. One, the allocation of our funds greatly supplied that network grants for youth job training. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair. I'll then hand the motion to Senator Cal.
Is there support?
Support.
There's been moved Department of Second, it's sent two four zero one four one to council. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
To Emily. Well, Great Lakes Aqua Habitat Network Grants for Residents Should Resolve That Proven City Officials Are Autobired To Do All Things Necessary. Execute Any Necessary Agreement To Accompany Funds For Three Hundred Thousand Dollars To The Great Lakes Aqua Habitat Network Grants. What was the unique job trying to be, sister?
This resolution did not come through administration.
Say it again.
This resolution did not come through administration.
It did not come through the administration? Why it didn't come through the administration?
Because council members can put things through that not having come through administration.
So this resolution was created by, okay, so. Let me, I, who you want? Don't you go there, go nowhere. No, I'm just.
Now they told her come on back.
We, I would.
Come on back.
Emily, that, all my life. No, I'm just. So.
Mr. Taylor?
Uh-oh. I ain't doing this, Taylor. Uh-oh. Taylor, is.
What's your request?
The request is that if you look at that resolution, look who signed it.
Hold on, let me look at it.
Okay, and look how it was presented. It was presented from the council. So administration don't have anything to do with that.
Big head. That's how you tell. That's on your.
So.
Now somebody trying to explain it to do.
Resolution two four zero one four one.
Who signed?
Look at Judy face.
This resolution, did y'all support this resolution?
You don't have anything to do with it.
Did y'all review this resolution?
And look at it. Look at Judy face.
Lucy, you got to explain it to do.
Who signed it?
So did you know that?
Support order. Where is this one screening? John.
Calling you to order. Go ahead.
Okay, so did you know as member of the Harper Ad-Hoc Committee that we are at liberty to refer to resolutions that have been done in the past? So I'll speak more about that on my time.
Okay, so are you aware that I've been explaining or asking the Ad-Hoc Committee? And I have talked to you guys about a resolution for three hundred thousand dollars for the full market? So.
Request confirmation.
What's your request?
Did you know that if we were not on that category yet?
Are you aware that we have approved a lot of resolutions and we wasn't in that category? But we approved them. So here again, this resolution is for three hundred thousand dollars. Here we got a full market. Did this application go through the process?
Yes.
It did go through the process. What category is this money coming from?
Request. So this coming out of youth job training and administration, they did have a recommendation for this. So I just want to correct administration about that. So I want to be very clear. I said, I said, yeah, so this came through administration as well. And so this is coming out of youth training application. What happened with the Harper Ad-Hoc Committee? We went through the resolution because unfortunately, you know, when they are sending out administration, they have varying amounts. So when some entities apply for, like say a hundred thousand, administration might say, okay, give them five hundred thousand. And then with some, if they apply five hundred thousand, they may say give them a hundred thousand. So this was one of the resolutions that the administration, yeah, so they did have input on this.
So they had input, why wouldn't they have created the resolution to grant before council since we was on this category versus the council doing it itself? Well, as I say, I've always run resolutions that they were ready to be approved. With assigned agreements. Because usually, oh, they, oh, that's fine. Oh, it's not signed from nobody. Oh, that's why, that's why I had told you.
It ain't signed.
Look at the resolution at the bottom.
William Campbell, it ain't signed.
So, so, I'm sorry, I'm speaking my time. Okay, and so we have, we have forwarded through many other resolutions. So I'll give you one, for example, mine. Administration or the Harper Ad-Hoc Committee, they did not select this, yeah, mine. And so the Harper Ad-Hoc Committee, we brought that resolution to council because there was no reason to deny them the money because we had the money here for block.
So let me ask you this, even though your Ad-Hoc Committee is nine of us and if we got recommendations, what happens to our recommendations? That we want to apply for so the full market?
Request confirmation.
What's your request?
He does realize he requested for Good Church and it ended up on here. He does realize he was fully supportive of that when he asked to have that.
Do you realize that I did not recommend Good Church, the administration?
No, 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 no. He knows exactly what I'm talking about.
He agreed to.
No, no. Good Church.
I missed your time.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Tash.
Thank you. So again, that's why I'm trying to do things category by category. So we can know every, every organization, to make sure every organization is looked at. So we can make sure they'll be taken into consideration what administration is considering as well as the community committee. And then as stated quite often, council has the final say. One thing that the Harper Ad-Hoc Committee has been very transparent about is saying that letting you all know and giving you these printouts of mailbirds of all of the information pertaining to the application. And this is allowing every single colleague to take a look and so recommend any organization that they see fit. And from there, resolutions will be created based off of their recommendation. And then this body as a whole, bottom up or down, that opportunity has been on the table since the beginning and is still on the table now. So I don't want it to appear as if the Harper Ad-Hoc Committee is making decisions for the entire city, for the entire body, because that's not true. We're just taking the, we're leading the initiative to make sure that this body has all the information that they need to make a vital decision. And then next, again, as we were talking about the resolution from administration, like I named mine, when I was talking about the mine resolution, I was being real clear on the fact that council pushed for that. So that may have came without a signature as well. There are many others, but they were not brought up. The point is, we want to make sure that every single person, every single organization, excuse me, not person, that they receive a look, their fair share. We want to make sure that if there's any money left over, then we could, you know, do whatever we have to with that money, whether it is allocate for special projects, award more to, to make some, to do whatever is at the pleasure of this body. And so I don't want it to sound like we're doing something beneath or unethical or we leaving someone out because that would sound like that's being insinuated. That's not what we're doing at all. So again, for the record, every single council person is at liberty to make suggestions. We supply you with the information to do so. Now, if the colleagues refuse to go through the information, I really don't know what else to say. But, but for this, we selected that we were going through and we were still identifying, it's not too late for you to place your request, for you to vet the organizations to continue to do the great work in the city of Atlanta. So I encourage my colleagues to take a look. Councilman Priestley, she has drafted up others such as in the full category. So when we get to the full category, we can take a look and we can see, okay, where can we, we can discuss the three hundred thousand dollars in more extent. But what I don't want to do, I don't want to hold other organizations hostage because that would sound like a rebellion and it's very unfair to them. So I don't want to do that. So we have youth wellness applications. We know we have people looking at those. So colleagues, please take these, go home, take a look, make your recommendations. So we can, when we bring this category before the body, we all will be able to vote, vote your selection. You can give your suggestion to the Harper Ad-Hoc Committee. We can vote it up or we can vote it down. We don't have to take the advice or the recommendation of administration. We don't have to take anybody's recommendation. We can do whatever we want to do honestly. And so it was at the bill of this body. When it comes down to mental health and front applications, we have those as well. When it comes down to small business loan improvement fund, when we get to that, we discuss this further because that also may be an option for a lot of businesses. We can discuss that further. And when it comes down to small business grant applications, we can discuss that again. But let's go ahead and not try to comic book the process and make it appear that we're doing something unethical. We encourage all colleagues, so please review the category so we can, and then submit your recommendations so we can move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Yes, vote in motion.
So this organization applied.
Yes.
Correct. So correct. They applied. And it's now our job to kind of see if that's where we want to give them, having them to apply for, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I approve because again, it is youth job training. And as much as you can allocate for that, I will allocate. I, I think the youth, it is important because it gives them work experience. Not only that, but keeps them busy, just like the last resolution stated. And when they're doing something positive, it influences their entire life from that day forward. And I really do hope that we pass this as a council. I also want to put in, in this category, we're talking about youth job training and youth initiatives. And if they apply. we're talking about youth job training, youth initiatives. And if they apply and they're, uh, responsible and agree in our profit, then I think we should allocate the money to go to the intended for. So I'll be bringing this for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead. The head note is the first round. You're in.
All of them.
No, we're still in the first round. Any other discussion in the first round? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and take my time. Um, so in regards to this, I know that this is also tied to, I'm delighted with youth job training that administration is putting forward for summer youth program. And, um, it was approved by the committee for the whole amount. So I'm, I'm in agreement with that. I also want to address the, the Northland Food Market issue again. Um, I actually addressed what they asked for when they came in front of us instead of us for deep cleaning. There is concern that ARPA cannot do use for deep cleaning of a store prior to their opening. That is not part of the ARPA, um, guidelines. So that we will be giving more information. We don't know how they calculate the three hundred thousand dollars. We don't know how much it's going to cost for, these are all questions they need from, from first and, um, first and young, not for me. I told them what they wanted and these are the questions that he asked me that I was unable to answer. So there is some concern whether the Northland Food Market for the teeth cleaning that they requested when they stood before us, that, I think that is an eligible expense. So, um, and I just want to bring that up. So now we are around the second round.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I, I, I heard my colleague down there. And I don't know what she knew. I heard her say that I, I, I got you or whatever because I separate, I don't know whether, cause I separated the resolutions. I, right, as a council person, and I, I don't want people to take my position as further or should the council like, and I support them. I respect you guys and our leadership and the work that y'all do in the community. But if I have a question, a some assistance about a resolution as a council, I should have the right to express my thoughts without feeling that I need to, ooh, don't say nothing. Don't ask questions about this resolution. Um, I'm not against. The water testing. I got, I just got some, it, it, it is, and I, no, no disrespect to the Ad-Hoc Committee. But I think all of us should be looking at applications. I think when y'all, no, 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 no. My colleague, um, Councilwoman, um, Jerry Winkler asked us to have a separate meeting. I think what we should do, we should have a separate meeting to look at applications. So we all can make recommendations, not two people, all of us and those who don't show up as on that. But I think we all should be looking at applications and making our recommendations and not waiting on a recommendation to come before the Ad-Hoc Committee. Because if yours doesn't, to me, my recommendation will be give three hundred thousand dollars for the cherry pick resolution that y'all done to cherry pick and approve other resolutions for other categories, for other things, and y'all went in that category. Now you want to talk about category. You can't have them both ways. If we only deal with categories, don't come bringing a resolution or nothing else and the category ain't there. I would like to make a, um, substitute motion to move this to special affairs.
Oh, she about to throw, she about to flip out.
And have the administration sign off on this particular resolution.
Motion for seven, resolution two, four, zero, one, four, one, special affairs. And to have administration sign off on the resolution. Is there support?
Support.
Send properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I, I'm just concerned about the way, um, the administration came. I'm worried about this resolution. And I already heard that they left and they want to stay here and ask questions. I just want to make sure we will of this resolution. So I, long as they, yeah. Hold on. See.
They probably fall off.
I, I hear my colleague down there talking to me. And my colleague down there talking is just making me don't want to support this resolution. And it's almost like if I don't support it, I'm going to get, um, she go, whatever. I don't, I don't.
Request confirmation. Request confirmation. When, when y'all are down there talking to each other, do I assume it has anything to do with you or it's about you or do I just let you talk?
I, I'm, I'm just going to stand behind those.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I think sometimes it gets a little too personal. I should just say, do you like this resolution or not? Is it about this resolution or your love for the food market? Like it's been over and over the food market. And I've already stated, I would never go for that food market. Um, so let's concentrate on the actual resolution and not our feelings, um, or what we want personally, because this is about city business, not ourselves. Do you like this resolution or do you not like it? Let's vote on the merit of the actual resolution. Given that, um, I believe that the administration pretty much ran away because they didn't craft the resolution. So they can't answer any of the questions. So they rightfully said, hey, someone from council brought this forward. So council, discuss. That, that doesn't mean it's shady. Council breaks stuff up all the time, including, um, the member that has spoken against it. So I, I don't understand the emotion in it, to be honest. I think we need to just look at these issues as they come, vote on facts, figures, um, your opinion on the matter, but not, I, I don't get the whole bringing up grievances and other things. Just, do you like this resolution? If so, please vote yes. We have something to do this on our, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just really quick. So I just want to comment on having the extra meetings. I will not when, I will not have additional meetings that we had when, um, um, that's what Brown here, she admitted, she said that we had most meetings that she had the same council. I'm not going to have an extra meeting. Uh, we have the information. We are sent the information. Go home, take a look at this information and from your ability, if you bring it to the Ad-Hoc Committee, we'll get your resolution drawn up as per usual, as we've been doing. We will bring it to the body and then get a vote. I don't, I mean, I don't understand where it appears that we need extra meetings to discuss. No, not at all. Because that's the case, you know, um, they were saying that with the rules. You have the information, take it home wherever you go, make your recommendation and then bring it back. And so again, I'm not interested in having extra meetings because, um, the ARPA Ad-Hoc Committee, when we take your recommendation, when we meet and when, when we, um, look at the recommendations, when we come together, that's it. So please, let's make sure that we're doing our part. Let's not try to create extra meetings because clearly, uh, I mean, let's not create meetings. So, uh, with that being said, I wholeheartedly agree with the councilman tonight for, either we are with it or we are not. This is, this is working with job training, job training. We are trying to pass this. We have to stop going tit for tat. We, we must, we must. If, if we believe in it, go with it. If you think that this resolution is good, go with it. Otherwise, do not, and we can just move on. So, um, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, this is the vote. Send resolution two, four, zero, one, four, one to special affairs.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Offside.
The vote is five yes. Is there another one abstention?
Five yes and another one abstention. That would be sent to special affairs. That's the end of the resolutions. We now have a twenty minute special order on city council budget hearing process. I requested this hearing, um, this, this discussion item because last year I heard a lot of complaints about how we didn't do hearings, even though it didn't follow previous, um, process as before and scheduling, et cetera. And, um, so I want to hear from the body. We have our, our CFO has stayed here. He is also recommending that we, um, concentrate during our hearing process on the policy and not necessarily on the finances because the finances stay the same. Um, basically, well, they remain, they follow the process, the, the, the policy. So what is your, the body's pleasure? Is there any discussion on that? How they would like to do it? I ideally see our hearings on alternate Mondays and Wednesdays like we did before. That's our scheduled council meeting days. And they would be held next month. Um, and so if we didn't have, don't have council meeting, we would have a budget hearing. And we would have a day for makeup. So any discussion on that? Um, there will be a day scheduled for makeups or for call pads on budget process. Does anyone have any feelings? Otherwise, um, Mr. Moore and I will get together later on this week instead of the, that hearing, um, process open. But I know the people who complained are not here, but do you have any feelings on the budget process? Is it appropriate? Okay, seeing none. Um, I'm going to close the special order out. And this is more of you and I will get together later on this week. Okay. Um, this, um, motion to adjourn?
Support.
Move properly seconded to, um, for adjournment. Roll call.
Oh, wow.
Yes. Yes.
Go to six yes, zero no. This is me because during nine fifteen.
That's the only one? I got two more. What all they got?
It's actually, um, it's up to, um. I got, it's up to the president. No, we got.
Hi.
I'm listening.
No. I'm not, I really, you know.
Oh, one hand is not going down. I just thought.
This, this is on, uh, hot.
They ain't got a brim. I'm glad I grabbed my jacket. Shit. I'm going there and pulling a gun on me. Y'all trying to get my, my channel. No, you, I, I did that. That's why I got a struggle today. The still, man, y'all gotta be ready though, man. Y'all sitting up there, you running for, for the seat and not thinking. Dude, but they still, you was only one of the five. And y'all got no strength on that shit today too. I told Trevor about that shit. He said he was going to call you about that. That's why I'm like, man, I believe y'all just be doing any type of crazy shit. Dude, you still on it. I don't know why you keep thinking like you not, you not, okay, you see in a minute. You gonna keep pulling it around? I ain't gonna tell you no more. Dude, but still, man, you, you gotta be thinking if he not be, then you running for a seat. That shit, what you gonna do? You gonna cost yourself a seat fucking while playing when people looking at that. I don't care how you say, you got a little voters looking at that type of shit, man. But yeah, but still, that's why I would have said, oh, well, Trevor, he wanted out. Come here to him and ask about that. Where you doing stuff, you not running for a seat. What you can do, what you want to do. You running for a seat. All that shit that he be doing. When he doing stuff, you gotta be humble. Cause I told him that shit to thousand Trevor. Man, that man running for something. You ain't just be that. Trying to explain it to him, but it's like, you know, I just said that, you'll figure it out. Can't tell him. Man, you pulling yourself in some bad situations. Doing that shit. You, I mean, you can, you like that. That's just like, they say, I'll give you a better example. If you should, I, with the one, I mean, this is in the one.
I will now call the government operations, uh, special order, roll call, Madam Chair. Madam Court.
That's how I'm thinking about that.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Murphy?
Present.
Priestley?
Present.
Mr. Burris? Mr. Burris? Mr. Depp?
Present.
Viper? Mr. Burris? Present. Uh, and that, any requests or changes and or additions to the agenda? We have none. That not brings us to public speaking. Are there any public speakers?
How y'all doing again today? I would just like to say that, um.
What can you say to your audience?
Oh, my name is Chris Jones. Um, once again, um, it's just like, we implement to y'all, especially when y'all keep looking at that budget. Once again, um, it's just like, we implement to y'all, especially when y'all keep looking at that budget. Because before y'all spent a dime on an aquifer. I was asking y'all to stabilize the water. Y'all would've stabilized the water funds. Those twenty-five jobs that needed from the water department, if you feel good. Those water rates that are not going to be raised up wouldn't be able to go up. And you saying, um, you need, um, uh, missing funds or whatever the excuse that y'all using to fund all of these, uh, summer programs for the kids? Revenue, no, the DDF, revenue recovery or whatever. Don't y'all think the water department, it deserves some recovery during the pandemic? Especially when people was told not to pay their water bills? And people was told to stay at home? I really wish that y'all would've been right representatives instead of letting the administration write everything. It was, I don't mind the administration and their voice, their opinion and, and, and reasons for projects. But I really wish the city council would have rules and representatives to help the people. Um, another representative y'all could've wrote. Y'all could've issued clear requests to help people fix their roof and stuff. There's a lot of things that y'all messed around with. The first time grocery store came up here, they was at six hundred thousand. They cut it to three hundred thousand, and when it was six hundred thousand, it was a hundred and ten percent pushback. But now we got a little bit of love for it, and it just seem like we got some new people involved. It's, it's increasing that love. But at the end of the day, that grocery store is leaking. It was leaking then and it's leaking now. I just wish that y'all would put the people first. And as far as the summer jobs, yes, there is programs already to give kids jobs. But it's still kids that's left out, so can't really complain about that thing.
Thank you. Are there any other public speakers?
Thank you. Yes, Jan Marie Arpa, seventh ward council candidate. I just want to refer back to the item number two four, two four zero one four one. Reallocation of ARPA Dallas for this Great Lakes Aquatic Habitat Network, which appears to be related to the Mott Foundation. Um, it also appears to be an opportunity to funnel three hundred thousand dollars to, um, the interim council person's, uh, swim water lab. Uh, that money had previously been allocated or requested to be expended at the, um, building out of which her organization operates. Either way, it's just another way for her to get some money. And of course, she will get at least ten percent of that three hundred thousand dollars being the, um, fiduciary agent, um, for that. I believe that she should have, uh, indicated to the council and the public that this is her organization, she is associated with it, she would benefit by it. Uh, I think that what is done in the dark needs to come out into the light. And if this is not the case, please prove me wrong. Please prove, um, other concerned citizens wrong. Um, this just isn't right. She should recuse herself. She should not have even voted for it to go to Special Affairs. Again, another instance of corruption in this city chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public speakers? Okay, seeing one movement, uh, council response. Would anyone like to speak? Madam Chair, uh, Ms. Shad?
Yes, the, um, inept candidate for the seventh ward, Jan Marie Arba, couldn't be any more wrong in being loud and wrong. Um, again, I said from the very beginning where I work, always standing where I work. Uh, the constant you taking opportunities to rather do everything rather than lead is really sick and it's not lost on seventh ward candidates. I mean, on seventh ward voters. They are clear. They see it's not working. And the fact that you were there, come up here and tell a clear and blatant lie. Everybody in the city knows what I do because I don't hide it. So to act like someone being disclosed, when you can go back to look on camera for the fact that where I work, it's told, it's told constantly, it's talked about constantly, because I am trying to be a source for publicity. When there was a problem with the water, I stepped up and stepped into a position that helps not only this city, but people around the country. And because you want to have a seat so bad, you would take an opportunity to spread lies and to spread rumors against something that can hurt other people that are actually being helped. You see, people get help on what's in their water. They get access to resources. People around the country are benefiting. And so the fact that you would dare stand up here and lie, also that you could have a seat, shows the fact that you don't need the seat. It's really, really sad. And I think at your big age, you should realize that lying is easily proven. It's really sad. Again, it's on camera, and then you bringing my foundation of this again, loud and wrong. Talking about I'm going to get ten percent, loud and wrong, but I guess it benefits you to lie. I have no reason to lie. I have no reason to not to transparent. I was transparent from the moment I got in this seat. But again, at your big age, your lack of real leadership continues to show. You have a nice evening. I hope you stay, because normally you only stay for drama and not for real business. So thank you.
Okay, another council response. Do you have a council response? Hearing none. We are now at resolutions, or I think the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
That's okay.
Madam Chair?
Uh, Mr. Smith. Is there support? It's been a complaint, a complaint by, um, Mr. Al Minn. Al, um, thank you. All right, um, so are there any separations?
Yes.
Uh, I think guy here, Ms. Priestley, and then Mr. Murphy.
Yes, I'd like to separate two three zero four six six point two.
Okay, two three zero four six six point two. Okay, and Mr. Murphy?
I would like to separate two four zero one zero six and two four zero one four four.
Okay, so everything, um, is the appointment set? We can all consent together? Okay, so everything's separated except for the appointment?
Yes.
All right, um, any discussion?
No discussion under consent.
Because of the, but there's an appointment? Oh, there's still open discussion. Okay, thank you. It's been a while. Uh, roll call, Madam Court.
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Priestley? Yes. Yes.
Yes. Six yes, zero no. Um, appointment two four zero one four seven passes, and now we are on this resolution two three zero four six six point two.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'd like to throw you to the, um, city clerk.
Whoops.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you received one, um, one amendment to that, is it correct?
Um, well, from one person.
Correct. Correct, and that is changing the time and the section. Could you read that out?
Um, well, I received on this behalf of us, um, who, who we point for? I was just like, I'm not sure what the city for, for the time, it seems four members to the ad number or ten. Five, three in the first round, and three units, thirty issues, second round. And the other, there's rule twenty nine point four. I'm going to put it out in the morning, please, and it's a question.
Correct. Okay, and, and I'm going to support those changes as well. Um, so I urge that my colleagues to support those changes, and if they have any others, to bring them out now. And let's send it to the council and get it done. It's been six months. Thank you.
Um, does, did anyone else want to speak? Did, I thought I, anyone else? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Did, did you want to speak, Mr.?
Madam Chair, um, I think we discussed having, um, when we took to vote on each separate, or just have discussion on, on the amendments. So, um, first and then start after making motion to amend. Um, so I'm going to have to ask one of my colleagues to do that, um, but to make the amendments and then discuss them all together in one, in two rounds if necessary, and then vote on them individually. That was what we discussed in council last week.
So for clarification, do we need to amend resolutions two three zero four six six point two to two three zero four six six point three?
After we do, we go amendments.
Okay. So are we on? Rule twenty eight point four?
I mean, I, I don't have the floor connection, so we'll need to have one of our fellow council members make that. I, I did make, oh, I gave up the floor, but, okay, so maybe I didn't give up the floor. So, um, I would like to make, um, a motion to amend the rules to change this, um, I think this rule number twenty eight point four. I haven't had it in time. Um, twenty eight point four, or, um, first round discussion, five minutes, and the second round's discussion to three minutes. And then public speaking to, um, change it from two minutes to three minutes.
What is this?
And that's rule twenty nine point two. A second, I'm looking at the redacted one, um, twenty nine point two. Twenty nine point two.
Yeah, yeah, too.
Go ahead.
I'm ready.
So twenty eight point four, and the next one was twenty, I think it's, oh, it's twenty nine point four. Because it was like the, um, the line goes through four as well as the three next to it. So amending rule twenty nine point four to, back to three minutes per speaker rather than two minutes. And those are my two amendments that I have on these, and I still move.
Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, uh, discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Thank you for, um, bringing my amendments that I brought to you all. Because they sound like they're hanging with you, but it's all, you know, we all, you know, we all in this together. But the reason why I wanted to change both, because I thought if we went from public speaking to five minutes, and so taking the five minutes to two minutes plus. And I heard, I, I'm thinking about, um, Mr. Jones speaking. And when he spoke, he said it was a dime a minute, but when I looked into it, it wasn't one minute, it was two minutes. We took away one minute, which is longer to two, and I, we put it back to three minutes. Also, um, the, um, the change of the five minute, five minute. I thought, you know, keep it to five minutes, and then bring it to three minutes was better because sometimes we use the five minutes to, um, go and exhausted and turn around and do the five minutes again. I think this should be five minutes on a subject matter, then wrap up three minutes on the same subject matter. I wanted to, to look at public hearing, um, public speaking and see how many minutes do, um, the public have to speak on public speaking. I want to change that to five minutes. I'm trying to see where is that. I think three minutes is not a long time for a public to speak on public, um, public speaking. We, um, it used to be unlimited for public, public hearings. Now, and then I think we changed it to ten minutes. Now we take that from ten minutes to three minutes. That's three minutes to speak on clearly, uh, uh, important matter. So if one of my colleagues could, um, go to that, um, see where it talks about public speaking. I mean, public hearings, public hearing. Council members might not speak on public hearing. I see that.
Rule twenty nine point six.
Members of the public, should I have no more than three minutes? I would like to, um, make an amendment to take that three minutes to five minutes to speak on public hearing.
Um, I don't know.
Madam Court?
Oh, do I need to do it in a motion?
Well, I, we already have a motion on the floor, so...
Those are the, those are my colleagues' motions for her to make.
Are you requesting a substitute motion? Ms. Madam Court, I think she wants to speak.
What we was wanting to do?
I'm sorry, if you talk about the motion, or the amendments, or the four minutes on top of each other, and then have one vote. I think you should draw one to motion that you, pull that up or down, and then make his one for the other. I would like you to have every amendment under one vote. Make that motion for these two. You know, both these, these two up or down, and then you should make his one for his up or down. Okay. So we're going to vote on the amendment on the floor, and then you can make an amendment, um, if so, she's back there. Does anyone else, would anyone else want to speak? First round? Do we have two rounds then? Second round, anyone want to speak? Hearing, no one wanted to speak. We're going to vote on, um, the amendments that Ms. Priestley made on that on the court. Ms. Lewis?
No.
Yes.
Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Shad? No. Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
No.
What is three yes, three no? Three yes, three no, that motion fails. Um, any other discussion? This is the... We're still, now we're back to the original resolution. Okay, so, hearing none, we're, are we voting on the original resolution, or did you want to make your amendment?
I thought we had to just vote for this. Oh, is we, so this right here, we're going, we're going to vote on the rules completely?
Completely, unless someone else has discussion to...
Well, I would like to, um, make an amendment to make a motion to amend rule twenty nine point six. Members of the public, should I have no more than three minutes to five minutes to speak on it?
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor to amend rule twenty eight, no. Twenty nine point four from two minutes per speaker to five minutes. Is there support? Is there support? Hearing no support, we are back to the original motion. Hearing no support, we are back to the original motion. I forgot who spoke in the first round in the original, I believe it was Ms. Priestley and Mr. Murphy, would anyone else like to speak in the first round? Second round, anyone up, like to speak?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, um, so here, here, here's what I see is happening now, because I didn't vote on some things prior to this rule now, it looks like my colleague now is attempting to play the tic-tac-tac game to where we want to limit public speaking from two to three minutes, um, I mean, three minutes ain't that long for the public to speak. We went from five minutes allowing the public to speak, five, but it's now we moved it down to three minutes, now we're moving it to two minutes. I mean, y'all are really muzzling this community when it comes down to allowing you an opportunity to speak. That's why I wanted to just add the extra one, and I don't think there's no harm in bringing it to one, but I see what game it's being played now, it's being the tic-tac-tac. So now I have to play the tic-tac game, so because I didn't support one thing, now and we're gonna watch this play, it's up, I'm done.
If anyone else like to speak in the second round? Hearing no, and I will say that I'm, um, not playing any games, I literally do not think that we need to make three minutes, turn to five minutes. Um, it, we already have an hour or more of public speaking, and most unfortunately do not even choose to speak on the issues, they, they, they come for entertainment value. Um, I would maybe change my mind if we had speakers coming who could not speak on the issues in the time allotted, but not once have I seen anyone not be able to speak on an issue that they felt was important. Um, I felt they could interrupt it insulting other council people or, you know, performing, uh, for views and likes and for fun, but this is a council meeting, and until I see the majority of constituents coming up and, you know, if this were the water business and they were, you know, staking for action on certain items instead of coming for entertainment or satisfaction and calling someone names, I, I absolutely do not see the need to add more minutes to an already very long public speaking. Uh, plus, not only that, they get to speak at every committee meeting, before our committee meeting, before, during special affairs and during council. So if they cannot get their point across, I, I feel like there's something wrong, and it's not the only way either. Um, they can contact us personally by email, if we have any follow-up questions, we will, we will ask them, that's what happens. Um, but I don't play games, I don't base my vote on tic-tac-tac, I don't base my vote on if I like someone or not. I prefer, several council people say that, and it's wild to me that you would base a vote on someone else. Do you like this rule or not? And I don't like five minutes, so I'm not gonna vote for that. All right, um, I mean, oh, I was done, so, um, we are now voting on the original resolution, um, and.
But not, Madam Chair?
Wait, what?
Um, I would like to speak for a minute, please.
Oh.
Okay.
I didn't hear anyone.
Cause I guess because we have a new motion, we didn't, we have to do two rounds.
No, I didn't ask for second round. Oh, this is the second round, and then Mr. Murphy spoke.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Um, technically there's no motion on the floor right now.
Oh, there is no motion.
I thought the original motion was on the floor.
No, there's no motion, we went right into amendments.
Oh, dear lord.
Well, um, is there, I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
Ms. Michelle?
Um, through, through you to the city clerk, um, if we wanted to revisit amendments that we just voted on, could we do that? Can we reconsider those amendments that we just voted on, or is that up to the chair?
Yeah, in this meeting right now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So I, how do I know, I don't have to make a motion or anything, I just wanna say like, how do we make a motion? I, I make a motion that we reconsider Ms. Priestley's amendments, which I believe was, uh, three minutes for public speaking, five minutes first round for council, three minutes second round for council. I make a motion that we, um, we reconsider that.
There's been a motion to reconsider Ms. Priestley's original motion, um, and it's been properly supported. Uh, do we have discussion on that, Madam Chair? I want to reconsider, yes. Okay, discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
So can we do, this is my same question before, can we approve, support the same motion that we just voted on in the same?
This is a reconsideration.
Oh.
How many, um, for clarity, Madam Chair, how many votes will we need in order for this to pass? Two thirds of the way to the other. So everyone? I mean, it, does it have to be who, who, I, again, how, of the members present, but who can vote for the reconsideration?
Two thirds.
Or it just has to be someone who brought, who brought it up because you voted? No, so we're good, okay. All right, Mr. Murphy, I'm sorry, you were speaking, it's here for.
I'm done.
Anyone else? First round? Second round? Okay, uh, this is, uh, roll call for the reconsideration of Ms. Priestley's amendment, Madam Chair, or, sorry. I'm sorry, um, the motion should have been made last on the floor, we have come in.
Okay, Madam Chair?
Ah, okay, thank you.
I made a motion that we amend rule twenty eight point four to, um, five minutes in the first round and three minutes in the second round, and rule twenty nine point four to public speaking, I have no more than three minutes per speaker.
There's a motion on the floor, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved, uh, by Ms. Priestley and supported by, um, Ms. Michelle, and then is there discussion? Second round, any discussion? Madam Chair, roll call.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Shad?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Ms. Alamein?
Yes.
What is six yes, zero no?
Six yes, zero no, the vote for reconsideration passes. Madam Chair, does that mean that resolution passes, or do we vote again?
We're gonna vote on the actual, uh, the fourth amendment.
Okay, so now we are gonna vote on the actual amendment. Roll call, Madam Chair. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley? Yes.
Ms. Shad?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Alamein?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
What is six yes, zero no?
Six yes, zero no, that amendment passes, is there any motion? That was, that was a motion to amend the specific rule. Is there any other motion to amend a rule, or otherwise, men are?
Ms. Priestley? I don't have any other amendments, um.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Lewis?
I would like to make a motion, um, to pass resolution two three zero four six six point two, if that's all.
I believe we have to change it to the four, three zero, or two three zero.
Point three?
Yeah.
So do we change the point three yet?
No.
Okay, so, um, Madam Chair, I would like to make a, a resolution to, um, to amend rule two three zero four six six point two to two three zero four six six point three.
Any support?
Support.
Okay, it was supported, um, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Um, I think the way that the city attorney drafted this resolution, it reads so that you're just gonna add the amendments that were proposed and offered and adopted, so you don't have to amend this one, you just have to air what you just voted on, it's, it'll be included as a part of this to your voting on this actual one.
Do you like to drop that motion or withdraw? Doubtless.
Sure, I would drop the motion.
I would say.
Um. So now we just need to vote.
What are the other amendments?
Are, are there any other amendments?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Michelle?
I'd like to, for amendment, I'd like to make a motion to amend rule by the city versus what the meeting has been convened, the board is not all sufficient members are present in the state council chambers. I think that problem is, I mean, I think that part is fine. Um, the second part was said if form is lost, then the chair shall immediately recess the meeting for fifteen minutes, I think that, um, we should probably follow Robert's rules in the second half of that.
Okay, so specifically, do you want to change the wording and how?
Hey, family, y'all forgot to go to city council.
The chair shall, you can recess, that's fine, but then the, the time will jam for us fifteen minutes. I think given the history of things that happen in this chamber, that people won't stand outside at door for fifteen minutes, so immediately, so I think that we need to follow Robert's rules.
I didn't bring my charger, finally, I left the charger at home.
I'm not sure how we're gonna do that, um.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know if I can report information, uh, myself, but, um, I believe the wording was not that part, it was once a meeting has been convened, form is not lost, so as, so long as sufficient members are present, does this start a change?
No.
From the last time?
No.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, this is a new, this is a new, we grew.
It's definitely gone, cause my phone, I probably got about five, not even five percent left.
So are, are we trying to say form is not lost, or are we trying to say the meeting is not adjourned so long as sufficient members are present in council chambers? I think that is the amendment that needs to be made, okay? So, um, the, okay, once a meeting has been convened, the, the meeting is not adjourned so long as sufficient members are present in council chambers. Um, I refer to the attorney, and he thinks that is. Acceptable wording?
But if you, if, I think it's fine to say form is not lost, because if form is not lost.
Form is lost if there are not fair people in their seats.
In their seats.
Madam Chair?
I have. What is your point of information?
Rule forty, um, seven, forty, colon, seven, if you're on the rules, rule says even in the absence of a form, it's seventy.
I, I did, and then, when I left it at home, by accident rushing out the hall.
Recess, or take measures to get it for him.
Okay, do we need this rule at all?
You can get this right.
I, I think.
I ain't go out, I'm coming back in, Winter's got it up.